Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming. Let me call to reconvene the December 17th meeting of the Rancho Palos Forty City Council to order. Madam City Clerk, call the roll, please.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Parisam.
Here.
Mayor Potemseal.
Here.
Here.
Our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
And I'd like to ask Captain Guerrero to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is the closed session report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Ladies and gentlemen, the city council, all five members of the city council met in closed session tonight. I'll give a brief report where applicable on actions taken with respect to agenda item number one. That item was continued indefinitely because we're not yet in a position to brief the council on the issues raised therein. With respect to the so-called Dunes litigation, we briefed the council, as did CJPIA litigation council on this claim, and the council gave us some initial settlement authority. That has been communicated to CJPIA's council, and we'll see if that settles this claim, and we'll report back to the council at a future date. CJPIA's legal counsel also briefed the city council on the so-called Anderson litigation, Los Angeles County Superior Court, case number 24STCV. There was a pretty extensive briefing. Questions were asked and answered. No reportable action was taken. And finally, city staff briefed the council on the terms and conditions of the Greater Portuguese Bend Landslide Complex Buyout Program. Questions were asked and answered. No reportable action was taken. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Our next item are the mayor's announcements.
So this is always the funnest part of the meeting because we get to recognize various groups and people for doing really cool things within the community. So the first one, I'd like to ask the former chair of the Finance Advisory Committee to come up. Where is he? Oh, George! Oh, you're here! So as many of you know, councilman or councilperson Louis was on the Finance Advisory Committee prior to getting elected to city council. He led the committee on several financial projects, including reviewing the financial reports, quarterly and annual reports, financial models, budget assumptions, treasury reports, updating the city's investment policy to increase our investment returns, exploring funding options for the Civic Center Master Plan Project, evaluating the pension guidelines and pension unfunded liabilities, and recommending additional payment options to mitigate increased costs with CalPERS, exploring financing options for the Lider Linda Community Center Project, evaluated developmental fees, and recommending the issuance of RPV for a Nexus Study, or issuance of an RFP for a Nexus Study, excuse me, and recommending the issuance of an RFP to hire a development consultant for our capital campaign. With that, sir, I would like to thank you very much and give you the coveted tile.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, and the next item on our agenda is, I get the honor of recognizing four of our residents that have recently become Eagle Scouts, which, for those that you don't know, is really an arduous process within the scouting community, and reaching Eagle is a culmination of many years of working on merit badges and Eagle project and doing all sorts of things for the community. Really an honor for these gentlemen. So first of all, Bryce Crusarge, I may have butchered that, I apologize. On August 12th, 2024, Bryce from Troop 7 or 378 completed his Eagle Scout project at the Dorothy and Allen Lay Reserve. Bryce's project included installing approximately 280 feet of fencing along the initial portion of the plum tree, plum tree trail. The project also included the removal and replacement of a vehicle access gate. Graham Johnson, on September 24th, 2023, Graham Johnson's Troop 128 completed his Eagle Scout project at the Alta Vincent Reserve. Mr. Johnson's project included installing approximately 150 feet of fencing along multiple portions of Prickly Pear Trail. This fencing provided essential protection for sensitive habitat. London Duster, on August 11th, 2024, London Duster from Troop 783 completed his Eagle Scout project at the Kendita Civic Center. Mr. Duster's project included reestablishing a trail that had been overgrown and delinquent with a large, with large rocks. This trail connects visitors from the gravel parking lot to the Civic Center and will be used by pedestrian traffic during large city events. By the way, I had the opportunity of walking on that trail after that Eagle Scout project. It's very nice. And Matthew Soto, on June 23rd, 2024, Matthew Soto from Troop 128 completed his Eagle Scout project at the Alta Vincent Nature Reserve. Mr. Soto's project included installing approximately 250 feet of posts and cable fencing, which helps establish and delineate the trail where it was previously unclear. Thank you, gentlemen, very much, and we're going to come up and take some pictures.
Our next item, Mayor, is by affirmation to move approval of recycle and emergency personal preparedness kit drawing winners, Casra Farisat, Robert and Jean Markle, Virginia Colon, and Jose Valderde.
By affirmation? Yes, so.
Thank you. Our next item then is the approval of the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Councilwoman Ferraro.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Parisam.
Yes.
Mayor Potemseal.
Yes.
Mayor Bradley.
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our public comments for non-agenda items, and I do have three requests to speak. Our first speaker is Mr. Bob Kouts.
Good evening, Robert.
Good evening.
Hold on a second. Wait. You gotta go live. You're turned on now.
Am I live now?
You're live now.
Right. Well, good evening, Mayor Bradley, city council members and city staff. My name is Rob Kouts, RPV resident and property owner. First, let me say that I support all the efforts of the city staff to address the landslide emergencies, and I support the staff report. I'm here tonight to talk about my favorite latest subject, which is financing a long-term system to actually manage the landslide. I see a successful system as critical to the interests of retaining property values, and that's why I've gotten involved. Over the last four months, I've met with about 45 different people around the state, the county, looking at how other authorities have been financed, and I wanted to share a presentation with you at a future date, but right now, just want to talk about the most exciting idea which has come up, and I have to credit Mike Gatto with telling me with all the goals that I had come up with that a joint powers authority is the right structure to try to address what's happening and bring the right financial support to our city and to the peninsula. So a joint powers authority would involve the state, LA County, RPV, Rolling Hills, A-Clad and K-Clad, could have representatives of the HOAs and business community, and I think it could be structured as a private public partnership. This has been done in a number of occasions I can't go into with, in my three minutes right now, but I'm excited to come down and talk to you about it because a joint powers authority in broad base this way would have access to revenue streams that are not available. JPA can have access to annual governmental budgets, state and county level. Just for example, it could assess a toll on PV Drive South that which RPV can't because that's a county road and the county would be part of the JPA. Could assess business revenues related to PV Drive South as well as typical assessments of residents and property owners. So my experience discussing these is they can, this can be supported if it's done fairly, and there's a fully financed landslide management system that's, that's clearly identified. Those are big ifs, but I would suggest RPV City Council consider directing the staff to investigate a JPA, which I'll continue to work on and keep you informed of my progress. I also want you to know, because I'm talking to a lot of people about it, I'm trying to raise funds to pay for basin-wide underground imaging study of the entire 1,300 acres. You know, I, there's recent innovations that make this a very useful project, and if I can raise the money privately, I hope you'll support it. I know that it was, it's not normally used in landslide remediation, and the advisors of the city did reject it, but there are recent innovations that I feel to make it worthwhile.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thanks for listening.
Vina, can you take an action to get with Rob to talk about the establishment of a JPA and what that would look like from a financial point of view?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Noel Park.
Hello, Noel.
Hello. Well, I'm just here basically to support Rob. When, Rob and I are both longtime members of the Land Conservancy, and we got together when we were writing comment letters on the famous EIR and put a lot of work into it, and following that, he has dug in much, much deeper and become much, much more involved in trying to work out plans to finance and to also do the work of remediation or control of the landslide. And I would say that the amount of work that he has put into this, he can't convey in three minutes, nor can I, but it's tremendous. And I, I would also say the same thing for Dave Chura. And I have participated in a small way by being a sort of a sounding board and critiquing some of their ideas, but they get the credit for the work, not me. So I would say that you would be wise to reach out and bring Dave and Rob into the tent and somehow figure out a way to let them work jointly with your staff and with you so that they can contribute these ideas and concepts they've developed because they really have a lot to offer. That said, getting to this subsurface investigation, this business of the helicopter flown subsurface investigation, I think all of us kind of snickered when we investigation, I think all of us kind of snickered when we first saw the contraption that looks like a bed frame hanging underneath a helicopter. But I'm a follower of water events, particularly in the San Joaquin Valley because of the environmental impacts, and also it's just the future of the state. And I have come to learn that this is actually a well-accepted tool in the San Joaquin Valley. They use it quite often to map out sources of underground water and also places to reach charge. And Dave has reached out to the people who do the work, and they have assured him that this will work in the landslide. And the amount of money that I've heard, you know, don't hold me to it, Rob knows better, is something on the order of $300,000 to do a complete subsurface mapping and identify the water sources so that when we drill wells, we're going to hit the right spots. And I submit to you that if we're looking at spending $46 million, $300,000 is a very cheap insurance policy to make sure that we get our sums right. And I would strongly recommend to you that you have your staff get together with Dave and map this thing out. And I would, as a taxpayer, would strongly support putting up the money to do this study because I think it's really going to be a big help to planning what to do going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel.
Our next speaker is via Zoom, Eva Albuja.
Good evening, Mayor Bradley, City Council. I'd like to welcome Mr. Lewis and Peristam to our team. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for all the efforts we have done for the last year on the landslide. My name is Eva Albuja, and my home is in Seaview. I live a few doors down from the Graven, and I don't have electricity or gas. It has been a struggle for all the neighbors to go through this. And I have lived in Rancho Palos Verdes since 1978. And what we have accomplished this last year has been leaps and bounds for what has been happening with the landslide. I wanted to point out that this is a marathon. It's not a sprint. What we have accomplished, I hope we continue as a momentum going forward. I hope that we see it as something that we have to play catch-up. Back in 1989, in August, there was an EIR report that was presented to the city of Rancho Palos Verdes that was paid for from the county of LA stating the recommendations to keep stormwater out of the landslide, to put D-wells in, and to control all the water into the landslide region. That's the entire region that we have. And we basically ignored that until it was a dire emergency this last year. So we're playing catch-up. So I would like that when you see the budgets for the landslide, to remember that we are playing catch-up for the last 35 years and that we don't get put aside for other projects like the City Hall project, when we have over 250 homes suffering, and it's just not myself, it's my neighbors, it's my parents that live on Cinnamon Lane, it's all of us, and we're not going anywhere. The red tag homes, yes, unfortunately, they're the ones that have lost out, and it's been a huge hardship for everyone. And I would like you to really keep your hearts open and remember that we pay our taxes. We are paying more taxes because we're in that district, and we need your help. We need an understanding of how it's happening, what's happening, and to please continue the momentum that we have. We need more wells. Thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Eva.
Thank you.
Our next item is the City Manager Report.
Good evening, Mayor Bradley, members of the City Council, and our viewing audience. As an Eagle Scout, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the four gentlemen that were up here earlier and received the recognition. I think it's important for the community to know that their contributions to the preserve make a huge difference, and these projects really help the city out on its assets in keeping our open space. And I'm sure some of our friends from the Land Conservancy can agree to that. So I just wanted to give them a big shout out for their work. And I also want to welcome you to the holiday edition of the City Managers' Report and to welcome and congratulate our two new council members, Councilmember George Lewis and Councilmember Steve Peristam. Welcome. We all look very forward to working with you while you serve on the City Council. So with that, I'd like to begin my report, and we go to the next slide. And while I'm welcoming and congratulating, I want to take this moment to actually introduce a new member of the department. And we were very fortunate to recruit Jennifer Schmid, and she's coming to us from the city of Lakewood, and she's our new Public Safety Manager. As the council knows, this Public Safety Division was recently created, and we've hit some obstacles in getting it launched, but we were able to onboard Jennifer. She started a couple weeks ago at the beginning of the month, and she's got a lot of great ideas. One of them is a community survey, reaching out to the public and helping identify ways to enhance and improve public safety from crime. She's going to be working very closely with Captain Guerrero and her team, so I just want to give her a big round, an RPV round of applause and welcome her to our city. I think what's going to be very challenging, it's a new department, new division within the City Managers' Division, but her experience in Lakewood overseeing the public safety or being part of the public safety, she's bringing a lot of experience and skills to us for something that's new for the entire peninsula. For the public's benefit, this division is intended to supplement the services provided by the LA Sheriff's Department to help keep costs and do non-sworn officer duties.
And we're so much nicer than Lakewood, so, I mean.
And better views and just better.
The views are great. The amount of resources you guys have are blowing my mind, so it's honestly an honor to be here, and thank you to Ara and Catherine for welcoming and the rest of the city staff with open arms. And it's going to be great for the community, the residents, as well as to help alleviate deputies to handle more priority calls for service. So I'm really excited to be here, so thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
And you're here.
We'll be seeing more of her, especially at the January meeting. Okay, next slide. So speaking with, we had the tile ceremony for Councilmember Lewis, but now we have an empty seat on the Finance Advisory Committee, so we are starting the recruitment process. Anyone who's a budget or accounting wizard and wants to share those skills with the city, you can come, submit an application online, and the close of that application period is January 23rd, and the council will be looking in February, interviewing candidates, and selecting not only a chair but to fill that vacant seat. So if you're interested, please go to our website and.
See the problems you caused, does Councilman Lewis? Absolutely.
Just to amplify on what Ara said, though, it's great if you're accounting, especially governmental accounting, budget expert, but you don't have to be. I just want people to come that are willing to learn a little bit and have good common sense and aren't uncomfortable with numbers. So we sent that message out, and we did the outreach in July at the leadership conference, and I think that meant a difference to some people, that it's open to all. So if you're interested, please apply.
Great. Thank you for that.
Common sense is always good, right?
Well, I neither had an accounting background nor common sense, and I was on the Finance Advisory Committee, so.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
Good to know. Next slide. And, you know, with the holiday and in the spirit of the holiday edition of the City Managers' Report, I'd be, again, remiss if I didn't mention that we kicked off, the city kicked off the holiday season with our annual tree lighting ceremony, and it looked very different this year. It was on Friday, December 6th, and we were very pleased that it was a warmer Friday evening than we've seen in past years. We had an excellent attendance that came out, and I think people who attended, not only were they part of the tree lighting ceremony, but we had the Salvation Army band perform, the symphonic band perform. But something new this year is we had sledding. We actually had snow, and the kids really enjoyed it. They did have to fill out a form, a release or indemnification form, thanks to the city attorney. We also had roller skating instead of the synthetic ice skating rink. It was a huge success, and I know the council members enjoyed the sledding and the inflatables, so right on.
Yeah. Dan, we got to work on a better snow globe.
We'll work on that for next year. Next slide. And for those who have purchased live Christmas trees and need to find how to dispose of them, we're working with Edco up through January 15th. They have the tree collection cycle. It's based on your collection day. You put your tree out to the curb between, well, after Christmas, and up until January 15th, Edco will pick up that tree. Next slide. And I want to just give a big shout out to the finance team. They are, again, award-winning for their budget from the Government Financing Officers' Association, so thank you. Congratulations. You keep doing it, you keep honorary recognition, so well done. Next slide. And for the public's benefit and as well the council, for this year, City Hall will be closed in observance of the holidays from Monday, December 23rd through January 1st. We'll reopen on January 2nd and resume regular business hours, so just let the public know. We will have some resources, we'll have building inspections. I believe those will happen on the 23rd and 24th, as well as the 30th and the 31st. So you could still, we'll have limited building inspections, so some business services parks will still remain open, although the main city hall will not be. Code enforcement, you could still call in code enforcement complaints, and our building inspectors will respond. Next slide. And of course, New Year's Eve, nobody wants to drive, and if you're going to a party or some sort of occasion here on the peninsula, our wonderful Palos Verdes Peninsula Transit Authority is providing free services on New Year's Eve from 6:00 PM to 1:30 AM. You do need to make an advance reservation. The number is on the screen. It's 310-544-3710, and you could book a reservation and not have to worry about driving. Next slide. And of course, for all those who celebrate the holidays and observing Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, I want to wish everyone a very memorable holiday, and of course, a very healthy, prosperous, and joyful New Year. Next slide. And what I'd like to do is every quarter, when the Peninsula Public Safety Committee meets and they talk about public safety items, particularly in relation to Rancho Palos Verdes, I always invite Captain Guerrero to give a brief presentation on some of the numbers and stats that were reported out to the committee. So I'll hand the mic over to the captain.
Thank you, Ara. First, I just want to welcome and congratulate the new City Council members and looking forward to working with the new City Council. Also, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year from our Lomita Station. I'll be quick. Happy to report that crime is down in RPV. Specifically with traffic, we did have during this quarter, if you take a look, it is a summer month, so our kids were out on vacation, so that means more juveniles out on the streets, which means your traffic collisions are going to be up. RPV did get their motor back, and he's been proactive recently with a couple operations for speeding out in the switchback, so he is out there being proactive. We just recently conducted a traffic operation on November 2nd. We cited 18, 15 for speeding, and the average speed was about 77. But overall, the citizens out there and the residents out there see less activity out there, so that just goes to show that we are out there being proactive. So next, any questions? Comments?
Thank you.
Of course. Next slide. So Part 1 stats, like I said, crime is down in RPV, which is, I'm happy to report. We did see a spike in burglary, residential burglaries of recent, and what our team has done is actually partnered with our organized retail theft, which is our major crimes, and we actually did an operation on the west side, which if you see on the map, which I'll show you. They have experienced some spike in residential burglary, so we did hit that. And happily, we report, we had a few arrests coming out of that operation, so we'll continue that going forward. As far as you'll see, our stolen vehicles, that has been an issue not just in RPV, but county and statewide. So what we've done is we've actually partnered with Kia and Hyundai, and they've given us steering wheel locks, and we will be handing those out to residents here at RPV. So we'll have them send it over to City Hall, and they can distribute as needed. So like I said, we're happy to report that the Part 1 crimes are down. Any questions?
I guess I do.
Sure.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
So I know that we had in the past a rash of catalytic converter thefts. Is that also down? I know that's not explicit in these numbers, but I haven't heard as much about catalytic converter thefts.
Right, and so we pretty much have a handle on the catalytic converter thefts with the drive-through seminars that they've had with the etching on the catalytic converters. That crime has, it's decreased, we don't even hear about anymore. I mean, it's very rare that we get a catalytic converter stolen, so.
Fantastic. Great job.
It is a great job by everybody in the county, because that's one that was, it hit us hard, just like the residential burgs. So hopefully, we'll get a handle on these residential burgs.
Thank you.
Next slide. And this is the map I was speaking about, and like I said, on the west side, there are, there was a spike on the west side, and we're probably going to do one in the next month or so on the east side in that area, so coming soon, there will be an operation. Next slide.
A spike in what?
Residential burglaries on the east side.
On the east side?
On the east side. The western side and near Cannington, in those areas, they are being hit hard. It's unfortunate, but we're trying to get a grasp on it. Our Part 2 crimes, same as last year, 56, and I will say that our arrests are up 54 for both Part 1 and Part 2 crimes, so we are out there being proactive and vigilant. And we do have a rash of newly assigned deputies to Lomita, so they're out there with their partners, actually, like I said, being proactive and taking people to jail. Next slide. So these are our response times. As you see, our average LASD target, we are way below our average LASD target, and that is, if you consider that we have had our landslide security, and even with that, we're still under our response times. So I'm happy to report that our deputies are out there actually being, continue to be proactive and out there responding to calls in a timely manner. I believe that's our last slide. Excellent. Any questions?
That concludes the City Managers' Report. There are no questions, and happy holidays from the council to the community.
That's a really good picture.
It is.
Our next item is the Consent Calendar item, and I do have three requests to speak on item letter F, as in Frank.
F as in Frank. Let's see, I had, before we do that, I had a question. Is Brandy online?
Yes, she is. She's participating remotely today.
So Brandy, I just wanted to ask the status of how we're doing on hiring a full-time planner to backfill. I know we've continued to have a contract hire. Really like to see us get somebody in this seat. How's that going?
Yes, so we have just filled two of the vacancies for assistant planner, and then we will be, we have just advertised for the associate planner position, and that will be the remaining planning position that we have yet to fill.
Okay, so you're hopeful that sometime in the first, maybe early in the second quarter, we'll be able to find somebody to come in and take that full-time job?
Yes.
Fantastic. With that, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Or does anybody want to pull anything?
So we do everything except the one where we have speakers?
Everything other than. Everything other than Frank.
Okay, so I'll make I'll move to approve all of the consent calendar except for letter F.
I'll second that. Thank you.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Parisam?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferraro?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Seo?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to item letter F. Consideration and possible action to approve a professional services agreement with T and M Construction to provide demolition services for public nuisance abatement. Would you like me to call our first speaker?
Let's have a quick staff report. Do we have Octavio or Brandy?
Or anybody?
Mr. Mayor, if you.
Okay, I'm available. Yeah. Sorry, I just had to unmute. So for this particular professional services agreement, this is to conduct for the potential to have to conduct, for the city to have to conduct a demolition. This is for the property that's on the corner of Exultant and Dauntless. It was the first home that was red tagged. It's bank owned. The bank has reached out when we gave them a notification, a request for abatement. And they may end up conducting this work themselves. But in case they don't, and and to try to expedite getting that property cleaned up, getting the fissure filled, to make that a safe property in sight. We wanted to move forward with this particular contract.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff?
So we have speakers, right? We have speakers?
We do.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick note, any costs we incur as compared to the bank will be a lien against the property. So ultimately, we will be reimbursed if we have to do the demolition work ourselves.
Yep. Thank you, counselor.
Our first speaker is Nikki Nuscom.
Good evening, Nikki. How are you?
Good evening, Mayor Bradley, Mayor Protam Seo, the new council members, Louis and Preston, and the city staff, Aura Ramsey. So I would like to, as most of you, if not all of you know, this particular property is right across the street from me. And it's in a very poor shape. So I appreciate everything that the city and staff has been doing in trying to address the situation and the nuisance associated with it. I am hoping that the situation gets resolved soon, as I'm sure everybody over here does as well, as well as the property owner. I hope that's what their intention is. And I would like to see if, I know there are other properties around the city that fall within, there are not many, but fall within the same similar circumstances in that they don't qualify for the buyout, given the timeline of, you know, when they were purchased, or they're bank owned, but they are in a dire shape. So I'm hoping that this can become a forcing function and a model for taking care of those properties as well. I am personally worried as well, as well as some of my neighbors about the fact that, and I told this to Ramsey last week, that this property is bound to fail over the next few months. And when it fails, it can have detrimental deleterious effects on my property. So I appreciate your attention to this, and thank you.
Thanks, Nikki.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is via Zoom, Eva Albuia.
Good evening, Mayor Bradley and the city council. I echo the same thing that Nikki just stated. I do live across the street from this home. I like to bring attention that besides the nuisance, this property is all busted open, meaning that asbestos and mold does fly around in the air when we have winds. This kind of contamination is not healthy for all of us to live by. Besides that, being that the fissures and the sinkhole, that all that water is draining into Exultant, causing more damage. It does need to get controlled, and I appreciate that this is an item that's on your agenda, and you're looking at it. I support this to be done as quickly as possible. And I can't stress enough how much this is a burden to us over here on this part and looking forward to getting it resolved quickly. Again, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Eva.
Our next speaker is also via Zoom, Kit Song.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks for the brief opportunity to speak. I'll just be brief. We've polled the S R A board and also many members of our community. I think there's general support for this, and we encourage you to go ahead and pass this along with the consent agenda, just in the event that somebody is thinking of not voting in favor of the consent agenda. And that's really all that I have to say. I do want to voice support for the earlier speaker who talked about sustainable funding and management of the land movement. And I would strongly encourage the city council to take that under serious advisement because the idea of sustainable funding to manage this going forward is an important point. And I think the earlier speakers were right on target with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kit. Thank you. Council deliberations?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Councilmember Parisam?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferraro?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Seo?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that.
But Councilwoman Ferraro, you know, you can't, you're not going to be able to go do the demo on this. I saw you swing a sledgehammer at Ladera Linda. Don't get any ideas.
I've been practicing, though.
I know.
The next item is item number one, under regular business. Consideration and possible action on the Greater Portuguese Bend Ancient Altamira Landslide Complex. Late correspondence was distributed earlier this evening, and I do have four requests to speak.
Mr. Mayor, before I hand the mic over to our team who convened here to once again give an update on the landslide, what the council is going to hear and the public is going to hear is is a status update on the the projects that the council authorized us to move forward with, and that's the winterization efforts, the stabilization, as well as installing the additional dewatering wells. So we'll give you a status update. We've completed that work, at least most of the work. So you'll hear that. You'll get a report on the basics, the the general topics regarding the open space area and some of the efforts by the utility companies as well. And one of the things that we're going to ask the council on the recommendations is a funding to continue the maintenance of the dewatering wells and other operational items through the end of March. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Director Awad.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. This evening, I'll start the presentation with an update on the emergency stabilization work, both the deep dewatering well program, which I'll refer to as the D D W program, and the winterization. Then I'll turn it over to the city geologist, Mike Phipps, who will provide an update on overall landslide conditions. Then Community Development Director Forbes will provide an update on the FEMA voluntary buyout program. Then Finance Director Ramos will provide an update on funding. And I'll also note that participating this evening via Zoom is Bill McCormick, the lead engineering geologist with Geologic Associates, who is the lead consultant on the landslide project. So with that, the D D W program, as authorized and funded by the city council, has now been complete. Eleven deep dewatering wells have been installed at the general locations you see on your screen. These are not exact locations, but give you a good idea. The extraction rates overall for the D D W program are shown on the screen. I won't cite each of them individually, but they total approximately seven hundred and forty gallons per minute at this time. And one item that you'll see stand out on the screen is D D W five, in which the inevitable has occurred, that well has sheared and is in need of redrilling. Fortunately, that happened over a much longer period of time than had originally anticipated. Also, nine A is showing signs of pinching and will soon need to be redrilled as well. I'm just going to take a minute to talk about the totals of the D D W program here. So seven hundred and forty gallons per minute. I personally can't really visualize it. So for the audience, that's a million gallons per day, or eighty three million gallons overall extracted from the toe of the landslide area to date. And that's also hard to visualize. So over two hundred and fifty acre feet of water has been extracted. So if you think of two hundred and fifty acres, which is also hard to visualize, a layer of one feet, a one foot layer of water has been extracted. It's a tremendous amount of water that we've been able to extract from the landslide. Onto the winterization. City council authorized winterization in four key areas, as shown on the screen. Altamira Canyon is complete, although there will need to be ongoing maintenance. Portuguese Canyon is partly complete. Ishibashi and Paintbrush Canyons are also partly complete. I'll come back to that in a moment. Klondike Canyon is in progress. Much of it is already complete, and we're continuing to work our way up. The Sea View Grobbins and fissures are substantially complete. There's some minor adjustments that are needed. And drainage at P V Drive Surface Road is being scheduled. There's an area there that, because of land movement, is no longer draining properly and will correct that. The funding that the city, that the staff requested for winterization and the city council authorized didn't include contingencies, as we had noted. And in some areas, the fissures and the work that was needed was more substantial than in other areas. So that's where we have not been able to complete the Portuguese Canyon and a couple of the others. However, what we have prioritized has been on the advice of the geologist's team. They tell us the fissures that are closer to the boundaries of the landslide are the most important. The ones that are further down are most important. They allow the quickest direct entry of water. And so the areas that are further up have been lower priorities considering the funding constraints. Just some images to show the progress on Klondike Canyon. And the grobbing at Exultant and Dauntless. And then the admirable fissure. And I'll also just note that we do have some more erosion control work that we'll be doing for Klondike. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mike Phipps, city geologist, for an update on the G P S survey information, both near the toe of the slide as well as throughout the slide area.
Thanks, Ramsey. Good evening, Mayor Bradley and members of the city council. Welcome to the two new city council members. It's nice to present to a different group. I love the previous group. I just like to have some new faces. It's good to be heard. So, you know, the good news is it's not raining. And we seem to be in this pattern where it's dry, and it's going to stay that way for a little while, probably through the end of the year. Still don't know what's going to happen come January, February. But the good news is, if it does rain, we are we are now pretty well winterized as best we can be with this landslide and the resources that we have. And so I'm kind of in wait and see mode with the weather and how that performs. My theme with the movement is is that we've kind of reached a steady state of reduced movement. That's largely due to, you know, dry conditions for well over six months. We've had less than a tenth of an inch of rain. The the K Cloud wells have been pumping a lot of water since September and October, and the deep dewatering wells have obviously pumped millions and millions of gallons of water. The other thing I noticed is that, you know, that there was all the excitement about the new coastline forming off the toe of Portuguese Bend. We put a G P S monitoring point out there a few months ago, and it stopped moving. It has not moved for the last month. And what that tells me is, in the area of the Portuguese Bend slide, I think the ultimate, the deeper surface that we found and that was moving considerably, I think it actually stopped moving, and at least down at the toe. And the movement that we are seeing is probably more likely the shallower Portuguese Bend slide across a lot, a good portion of the area. So, you know, the bad news is the fastest movements we have out there are still, you know, five and a half inches a week up in the middle of the Alblony Cove area. But but it's been greatly reduced. We've seen a huge deceleration, you know, from August through October. And now we've leveled off. A lot of the areas are now, you know, Portuguese Bend are now moving less than a foot per month. That sounds good compared to where we were. So just going into a couple of the areas, you know, my opinion is that Klondike Canyon landslide has stopped moving. We had a couple of data points. A lot of the monitoring that we're getting right now is really right on the cusp of the instrument precision. And we've done further analysis on those points and have realized that they're zigzagging around, and that's noise. That's not real movement. And so my opinion is is that the Klondike Canyon slide has stopped and really has has not been moving since around middle of October. Alblony Cove is still moving three, three and a half to five and a half inches a week roughly. Portuguese Bend, a half inch to four and a half inches a week. And the Greater Altamira Slide areas further up the hill still moving two point three to five point one inches a week. So it's still significant movement. I have, well, actually, if we look at these these heat maps that we've been producing every time we have these council meetings, the most significant thing here is that this heat map looks largely unchanged from the October twenty eighth map. If you toggle back and forth, there, you know, the contours basically aren't changing. And if you look at plots that I'll show you in a minute, you'll see what I'm talking about with the steady state of movement that's going on right now. I want to talk a little bit about rolling hills. I just got a look at recent data through December third up there. And there are a couple of points that are still moving up there, but a good portion of it has ceased to move. And one of the things I've now noticed is that the total amount of movement that happened up there, compared to the new points that I put right down the hill, has been about twice as much. And I'm really thinking, the preponderance of evidence I have right now suggests this is a separate movement, and it's not directly related to this significant movement we have or have had down slope. There are still a number of points right along Burma Road that that are not moving. And those are between the main Altamira Slide complex and this area moving up above. So I, I, right now, I'm concluding that they are not related. There's also geological reasons for that, that I'm further evaluating, telling me that there, you know, makes sense that they are separate movements. So that's good news, I think. Can we go to the next slide after that? So here's some of the, you know, we've been plotting up these weekly monitoring data points, looking at the dewatering effectiveness. And this first graph are the points in the in the Klondike slide. What we've added to this this time is to show when the K C L wells, number five and six, came online. Number five was offline for a little while. That might have been when the when the power was initially shut off. But those wells are currently pumping three hundred gallons per day, and they've lowered the groundwater a good sixty five, seventy feet in the lower portion of the Klondike Canyon area. So that's, and because of that, that's another reason why I don't think that this sort of small anomalies in a few of the G P S points are actually real. I don't believe it's moving right now. So moving on to the next slide. This is the bulk of the P B L points. And really, if you look at the at the last one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, you know, eight sets of data, you know, these graphs are virtually flat. And so that's when I say steady state of dramatically reduced movement. And so that's when I say steady state of dramatically reduced movement, that's, that's what this means. You know, we know that, that when we started drilling those deep dewatering wells, we, we relieved a lot of pressure that was pushing on this landslide, especially from beneath. And we saw that dramatic reduction. But now I think we've reached this steady state where we're kind of at capacity with, with the dewatering system that we have in place. And it really speaks to the need to, you know, maybe with the new, you know, future wells that we do, they, they might need to be larger with, with greater pumps, can probably remove even more water. Let's go to the next one. This graph is the Sacred Cove area and the Abalone Cove area. So these have slowed down as well, but they haven't slowed down as much. We haven't, we haven't put as many wells over in the Abalone Cove side and they have not been as great producers. And so, and they also haven't been in, in place as long. So it's really, you know, I don't see much of an effect from that yet, a small reduction in, in the movement rate. And I think we need more data to draw something conclusive about that. Next slide. This kind of gives you a perspective of what's happened over the past years or so. You know, this graph starts on the left side around October 2023. And so you can see that the movement of all these points was, was generally below a half a foot per week. And, and that's after we had had the big rains of, of the previous season. And then things really took off, peaking at, at over four feet per week. And then we had this very steep backside of this curve, the dramatic reduction with the dewatering wells, the dry season, K Cloud's efforts. And, and now you can kind of see this range of, of movement that we're, we're in right now that ranges from almost zero to less than, than two feet per week over on the Abalone Cove side. Next slide. And then this is the, the graph that's way too busy. But it shows everything, just, just as a point of reference. And that's really just a compilation of all the previous, previous graphs. But obviously the theme is looking at those points, everything's pretty flat for the last six or seven readings. Is there anything after that? I think that's it. That's, that's, that's about what I have for you tonight. Obviously happy to answer questions.
Mayor and council members, one more quick slide before pausing for questions. And that's just to note that on PV Drive South, staff is recommending within the landslide area, extending the temporary prohibition on cycles and two-wheeled vehicles for an additional 90 days. And that's due to some continued higher rates of movement on PV Drive South, certain areas up to four inches per week and the possibility for deviations to form overnight. And with that, we'll pause for questions.
And I believe we're going to include single wheeled vehicles this time?
And that's why I said cycles and two-wheeled vehicles.
Okay.
We want to make sure we capture all cycles and two-wheeled vehicles as well as motorcycles.
So Mr. Mayor, if I could just add an interesting anecdotal experience that happened to me today. I came up to the city hall early this afternoon and followed a motorcycle through the landslide who did a series of wheelies as he went up and down each of the hills. So he was having a grand old time driving through the, driving through the landslide. All the more reason that we ought to extend this prohibition, which is being honored in the breach in any event, so.
Yeah, and I think in late correspondence, everyone on council received a, a note and some actually relatively gruesome pictures of somebody that admittedly ignored the sign and drove through on electric bike and took a header. And it was unfortunate. It could have been much worse. Fortunately, the person was just very badly bruised. Questions to staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, a quick question. In regards to the graphs, they plateaued out. That means it stabilized in terms of velocity, right? At this point?
That's right. We've, we're still moving, but we've reached a steady state of, you know, reduced velocity there.
Okay, now given, given the, the graphs towards Abalone Cove and Sacred Cove, if we were to place more deep dewatering wells in that area, that would alleviate, would that basically mirror what was happening or what could happen in Klondike Canyon? Same thing, basically we're adding more wells?
Yeah, that's, that's generally my belief is, is the, the wells, especially numbers one through six are really a great proof of concept. They've been very successful and, and especially when you look at the heat map and, and the contours actually wrap around in the toe and show that it's, that movement's dramatically reduced and that's directly related to those wells. So I do think if we put more in, you know, expanding that array across the toe, we will see the same effect. We should.
What do you think would be the ideal placement for, hypothetically speaking, three, three or four more wells?
I think probably one or two more on the Abalone Cove side, you know, from PV Drive South, you know, down between there and the beach. And at least one more in the Sacred Cove area. And really I'm, I'm just referring to the toe because I know that we've got, you know, we've got a concept in mind for future build out, which will include a lot more wells across, you know, other areas of the landslide, including in the middle of the landslide. So if we were going to put more in the, in the, at the toe, those are the places I would do them. Several more in Abalone Cove and Sacred Cove.
Got it. Okay.
Mayor Protam?
Yes.
You may also want to ask that question to Bill McCormick, who is the lead geologist for the lead company and he's on Zoom.
Yeah, happy answer. So we do have a concept to complete a series of wells across the toe. We actually have, we've had five planned out, waiting for more funding. Two would be in the Sacred Cove area and three would be on the western part of the PBL within the archery club. So that would be our initial row concept across the toe so that we can move these blue colors over at least in the lower part of the landslide. And there's also a future concept for at least one additional row, between 10 and 15 additional wells. If we can get them, for instance, we just finished a geological well up the slope and we have the highest pressures we've ever seen, Artesian pressures again on the whole site. And so a great candidate for future wells, once we finish off doing wells along the toe. But we need to get, we need to get the, finish the array across the toes so that we can see the same effect and stop the toe portion first.
Thanks, Bill. Appreciate that. Ramsey, real quick question. Do we have a tally of how many, how many regular wells, not deep dewatering wells, we have for A Cloud and K Cloud that are actually working and, and not working?
I do not at this time.
Okay.
Mayor Protam, and I know Gordon Leon, who's the chair of A Cloud is here, but roughly, I believe they typically pre the incident have 23 wells in.
Operational?
No, this is pre, yes, pre the acceleration of land. Right now, my understanding is they have eight or nine wells operating. And as of a couple of days ago, about 90,000 gallons of water has been extracted from all of those wells. So per day, yes. And in, when you compare it to the numbers, and these are not deep dewatering wells. And so the extraction of water is significantly less than what the city is able to extract.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a couple of questions. Still on this one. So Mike, so this is really encouraging, but it also looks like the relative movement between different areas has also been, it's more uniform than what I remember when we were really seeing the, the movement this summer, a lot more shear lines. This looks like the areas are starting to subside. Is that true?
Subside?
Not subside, but things are moving more in uniform as opposed to various things moving at different rates and a lot of the shear planes.
Yeah, I mean, if, yeah, if we start, if we, if we go back and look at what it was doing, this is August that he has up there now. And, you know, the, and this was a change from past historical behavior. You know, this thing started moving fastest right in the middle of the whole complex, whereas historically Portuguese Bend always moved the fastest. So, you know, but if we toggle through this, you know, September, starting to slow down, more yellow and orange showing up. Now the yellow and red and orange is gone by October 8th. And really you just have to watch these, I mean, these lines are contoured in AutoCAD 3D, you know, on a computer. And so the computer is selecting the proper location for these lines. And they're not changing much between October 29th and December 3rd, a tiny bit. Even the fastest moving areas are still the fastest moving areas with those light, lighter green colors.
So then I'm going to put you on the spot. I mean, a, a previous speaker asked a question about the implementation of ground penetrating radar. What's your thought on the current state of the art for being able to do 3D subsurface mapping using ground penetrating radar?
I don't, I don't know enough about it to really have an opinion on that. I, I researched, a lot of stuff came across my desk about this. Some people have put forth some, some ideas and companies have gotten involved in saying they think it's feasible. I was skeptical at first based on the fact that we have three different groundwater regimes in this landslide. We have sort of the bathtub, which is within the slide. We've got an area between the two movements. And then we have this deep water that's underneath the deep slide. So I, what I don't know is whether this technology could differentiate all that. And I, I think that would also be a good question to pose to Bill McCormick if, if he wants to take a stab at it. I don't know if he knows more about this than I do.
But you think it's something that would be worth investigating?
It would certainly be worth looking into. I mean, $300,000 if that's true. That's not a lot of money if you get a lot of really, really good information.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ramsey, yeah?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point out that also Gary Lass, the CEO for Geologic, is on the call with us this evening and it appears he'd like to respond to this. And then I'd like to also suggest something for.
Oh, absolutely.
Counsel's consideration. Mr. Lass, if you would please go ahead.
Gary, I think you're. My, my, my only comment would be, or my concern would be, we're looking at, at pore pressures, not necessarily static water elevation. So even if you could tell the water elevation below the ground surface, I'm not sure you can differentiate the pore pressures underneath the landslide. And that's really what's driving this failure. So I would be a little bit cautious. I don't know that you're going to measure the pressures that exist underneath the failure surface.
I would imagine you wouldn't be measuring pressures. You'd be measuring density, but Ramsey?
Mr. Mayor, you may recall that we are in, currently in the process of, where we just received proposals for a source water study for the landslide complex. And it may be something that the council may want to see as part of that study, potentially a separate section or some other part of the study. But that's something we could incorporate there if desired.
Perfect. Yeah, I mean, anything that we could figure out a way to get more, I know we've been drilling some of these test wells to establish the stratification within the area. And if we could get something that was more broad-based, that would, I think, be great data for everyone. So.
I could include it in the scope of the study.
Perfect.
Yeah, I just, just make one comment. To determine feasibility of something, something like that, then we'd have to see and, and see a previous example. Keep in mind, this is extremely complex. I think those studies tend to work better in porous sedimentary deposits and not necessarily highly fractured bedrock with highly contorted. So it'd be great to see some data where this has effectively been used before on a very complex landslide before moving forward.
Okay, Bill. Great.
I agree with that.
Not, not right now, Rob. Okay.
Yep. Mr. Mayor, I will include it in the scope of the upcoming study. And if the council would like it to move forward, they can still authorize.
Thank you, Ramsey. Do you have questions? Councilman Perstam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are, is this discussion right now involve this entire topic? Because I have some questions regarding the financial aspect of the ask for the number four, the actual ask for additional funding. Is, are we getting?
We haven't got to that point. We haven't got to that point yet.
Yeah, it's fragmented.
We, we try not to eat the elephant all at once, just, you know, bit at a time. Go ahead, continue Ramsey. Thank you.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Community Development Director Forbes for an update on the FEMA voluntary acquisition program.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and city council. So I will be presenting on the FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, their voluntary property acquisition buyout program. On October 28th of this year, the city FEMA and the California Office of Emergency Services, or CAL OES, announced a $42 million voluntary property acquisition buyout program for property owners in the landslide complex whose homes have been damaged or threatened by land movement. The application deadline for the property owners of interest with structures that are just destroyed, damaged, or imminently at risk of, to be considered eligible for the first round was on November 8th of 2024. And the city received a total of 85 applications. And here's a breakdown of those that are red tagged. Red tag means that they're, they cannot be occupied. Yellow tag means that those properties, there may be a portion of the property that, that can be occupied. And then green tag meant that there was not an issue with the, the structural integrity. So the minimum eligibility requirements were that the property cannot be bank owned, the property has not been sold since December 1st of 2022. It must be improved with legally permitted structures and the applicants must be the legal owners of the improved structures. The property will be selected by the city to proceed with escrow based on a prioritization order. Next slide. So the initial prioritization was the, that the structure be red tagged. The second priority was being yellow tagged. Then properties that are in imminent jeopardy of becoming red or yellow tagged due to their close proximity to land movement elements, properties that have been de-energized indefinitely, then properties that may benefit the city's landslide stabilization and winterization efforts. And then finally, properties that contribute to the overall value of the adjacent PV nature preserve. Now with that, there were so many that were red tagged and yellow tagged that those seemed to be the top prioritization. There were initially 20 red tagged homes. One of those is a property that is deemed ineligible because it is owned by a bank. And then there were three other that were determined ineligible. There were two litigations that the, the city experienced, the monks and the blacks litigations and the plaintiff lots for those were not included because those particular properties have, hold harmless agreements to allow them to develop. So with that, then there are 16 red tagged homes that were moved forward in the prioritization. Now we made sure to submit all of the applications to FEMA, but they also requested a prioritization because we'll ultimately be able to fund approximately 20 demolition, acquisition demolitions. So the second, the second pool of properties were those that are yellow tagged that are aligned with the path of fissures or sewer and drainage and thus in imminent jeopardy of being red tagged. So with that, there were 20 of the yellow tag properties that, and I think I have, I have the wrong numbers in here. There are 20. There are 20 of the, the yellow tagged properties that were, that were included in that. So my apologies for the, the numbers here being askew. But with that, there, there, all of the yellow tagged then were moved forward as far as, you know, the, all of the applications being submitted. But as far as prioritization, there were only 20 that, of the yellow tagged that were moved forward. Next slide. So here is the, the outreach and next steps. The letters were issued to all applicants this week. They were just mailed yesterday to notify them on whether or not their property has been moved on in that prioritization list or not. And then we expect to issue a request for proposals or RFPs for appraisal work, surveying, titling, and escrow services. And have the deadlines for those RFPs in January that will allow us to, in the time that we're, we're getting those services onboard, we can further evaluate the prioritization of the applications, looking at the ownership. The last, if the, the last time it was sold has been since that December 1st, 2022 deadline. And then we are hopeful to award contracts for the appraisal, surveying, and titling and escrow services in February or March of this year so that we can really get through these pre-award steps for the, the program, the FEMA program. And I believe that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Brandy. Questions of Brandy? Encouraging progress. I'm glad to see things are moving forward at, at, you know, a pretty quick pace, especially for government programs. So, great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we'll now turn it over to Finance Director Ramos for the funding update.
And how do we pay for it all? Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My presentation tonight is a financial report for the landslide expenditures. Thank you, Dan. Okay, so this slide here probably looks familiar. This is the same one we use every month as reported in the staff report for, for almost three years. The expenditures for Portuguese Bend landslide is about 43.6 million. And just focusing on 20, 24, 25, that's about 32 million. And today, in comparison to the prior month we reported to you, our total spent and encumbered is about 72% or 23 million, and we have a balance of about 9 million. One thing I wanted to point out, this is the same report as last month. One change since I reported to you last is the KCLAD loan. So as of last week, we issued approximately 350,000 as part of the KCLAD loan. So that's, that's the difference since the prior month. And also, we combined the DDW program. So this is originally at 11.3, and we combined it with the 4 million to approve on October 1st. And that's why you have that updated balance there. And again, the 43.6 million is, is not including the 1.1 million requests tonight from Dr. Awon, from Director Awon. So for funding sources, just for the public information of the 32 million in the fiscal year 24, 25, 25 million comes from your two major sources of funds. First one being the CIP of about 15.1 million. Approximately 10 million is from a general fund. The remaining funding for 24, 25 is at 2.2 from Supervisory Han's social program. And that was part of the 5 million that we received a few months ago. 3.4 million from ARPA and also Metro Funds of about 1.4 million. Next slide here is in a general fund, fund balance update for fiscal year 24, 25. We estimate approximately 39, almost 40 million of revenues for, as of June 30, 2025. Our expenditures are approximately 39.6 million. Our projected ending fund balance in June 30, 2025 is 37.8 million. One of the items I noted here with three stars, I wanted to point out that in addition to the Terania TOT transfers, we, since October and also since the beginning of the year, we, the city council approved additional transfers to CIP fund of approximately 8.4, sorry, 8.4 million. After subtracting the city council reserve policy of 16 million, the projected unallocated fund balance by June 30, 2025 is 12.9 million. This is the city's excess reserves of 12.9. And also, I wanted to provide an update on fund balance for your, for the city's CIP funds. At the beginning, fund balance is 33 million. Our estimated revenues and transfer CIP is about 16 million. And majority of this is from CIP fund, I'm sorry, from general funds. So mainly from TOT transfers, additional transfers approved by city council. And then also, this is where the 2.2 million is from Supervisory Han grant. Our estimated expenditures, including landslide and other CIP projects, is approximately 21 million with projected ending fund balance of 28 million. And as mentioned earlier, Director Awon talked about additional appropriation for your consideration tonight at 1.1 million. That's for maintenance of the existing deep dewatering well program for replacing wells, pumps, and re-drilling as needed. This, this slide here is a quick overview of what Director Forbes presented. The buyout program of the 42 million is, is part of the 56 million of the FEMA grant. So approximately 330,000 would be in in-kind from, from the city. And majority of, as you see here, 75% would be from FEMA and almost 20, 24.5% from property owners. And as a final slide, as I included in, in every month report, we want to just remind the public that we did apply for 61.4 million for state and federal assistance funds. So for 38.4, we, for the winter storm, we applied for public assistance. We also applied for, I'm sorry, this 22 million should be for, for the residents, that 22 million. And this is an error, I apologize. And then finally, 1 million for the city, for the 1 million for the energy shut off. And as of today, similar to the last month when I reported, we have approximately about 1.5 million that we estimate to, that we're working on currently. And that concludes my presentation for the financial report.
Thank you. Any questions for Finance? Councilman Peristam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple, couple of clarification questions for myself. One is the 1.1 we're asking for, that's new money. That's not money that's, could be found in some of the other buckets that have just not been spent yet or committed. It's, it's actually new money.
Yes, council member, this would be new, new money, new appropriation. So if the city council approves tonight, it would add to the budget. And so it would be, we would get to the 44.6 million if it approved tonight.
Okay, that's first point. Second point is something that's in the staff report that was very interesting to me. It's the dewatering program, maintenance and operations. That's what we're talking about the use of this money for, correct? 1.1 for that category?
Yes, council member, that is correct.
Maintenance and operations, right?
Yes, that's, and re-drilling.
So in the statement, it says that the cost of generators for each well is running at a burn rate of about $10,000 a month. That's, that's a big number. So if we have 10 or 11 operational wells, we're burning over $100,000 just for fuel to keep those generators, which is something that's clearly is successful and we have to continue to do. Is that, is that correct so far?
Yes, that's correct. And I'm pulling up the exact numbers as we speak.
And while Director Awon is doing that, I should add that it doesn't include the cost for maintaining and power energizing our sewer system and lift stations within the community association. These are just the dewatering wells.
This is just a dewatering well, and it's just the fuel cost, not the other?
It's fuel costs and rental.
The rental of the units, I believe.
Generators, yes. Okay. Do we have a breakout if we wanted to go there to the, the actual fuel versus the rental? Is how much of the 10, 10,000 is rental?
I, I don't have that available with me, but we're actually analyzing those numbers and looking at options to purchase and things like that. But we're still breaking those down.
Okay. And where I'm going with this is we have power to the east, we have power to the west, we have power to the north. It would seem to me that we should be able to run some kind of a line from Edison that we can power these wells. And then on top of that, put in the, the fact that we have the, the sewer system should be powered by this as well. I'm, I'm struggling with this, and I guess I'm new, you know, it's new eyes on this. And it seems to be it's inconceivable because this isn't sustainable. This is just not sustainable. The burn rate's way too fast. We don't know how long we're going to do this. We want to, at the same time, we want to add wells because we're successful. And yet, this is, this is, this is really a problem for us. Do we have any additional ability with, with making this case beyond for the, for the, for the homeowners themselves and trying to restore power to make a case that we're burning an enormous amount of money each month for this just to, just to be successful?
I, I was just going to comment that we share, I, I think the council shares that concern. The cost that we're, we're incurring just to keep those wells energized, and it's necessary, it's required. And there is power to the north, to the south, and to the west. Every time I speak to SCE representatives, I remind them how critical it is to get the dewatering wells, at a minimum, the dewatering wells and the sewer system energized. I spoke to our Government Affairs representative this afternoon and, and stressed that as well. And I think we need to continue to pursue it.
Okay, do we have any additional tools to apply pressure to make our case here? Because I know this is, this is new. We're doing this for about four or five months now, but that cost continues to go up. We're going to have broken wells. And if we want to expand this program, which is recommended, that's just going to add to our operational maintenance budget. It's, it's, it's almost a catch 22. We're getting to a situation where we're not going to be able to do what we need to do to be successful.
Correct. And, and this is paramount to the numbers that you're seeing in the deceleration and the stabilization of the landslide. The city sent a letter to SCE CEO and President requesting a meeting with myself as well as the mayor. And we're waiting to hear back. I was told today that they're, they're looking at scheduling that probably the first week in January. So as soon as I have that information, we'll be sure to let the council and the community know when that meeting is scheduled.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Is that all the report, or do we have some speakers?
Excuse me?
Do we have some speakers?
Is that the end of the report?
That does conclude our presentation this evening.
Oh, okay. Did I have a question? I thought there was more. So I do share Councilman Peristam's concern and the sizing of those generators. I know they're relatively large generators. I assume we've done a load analysis for those generators and we can't get by with smaller ones.
We've looked at various iterations and sizes, and that analysis continues, especially as in certain areas, we're now moving from a active drilling phase to more of a maintenance phase. Actually, thanks to our partners at KCLAD, we've made some, some good contacts that we're looking at how we can further optimize it. But I think even with further optimization, there's no getting around the fact that fuel, running generators and running fuel is very expensive.
Absolutely. Unfortunately, you know, spending a lot of money on O and M, you well know, is less money we have to be able to actually put in another deep dewatering well or something like that. I mean, we're getting very close to the end of the city's ability to continue to fund this out of hide without having a reserve for if something bad happens in the future that we can respond to. Yes, Councilman Lewis?
If you're, yes? Yeah, just a, a quick question. Obviously, if we could run, run these off of electricity, if they're capable of doing that, that'd be great. But what's the percent savings? If a dollar is spent on fuel for them, what percent of that dollar would be spent on power? Do we know?
It's, it's probably 10 times.
Okay, so it's a dramatic savings.
And I'm sorry, that is generators and fuel in my calculation.
Right, so we'd still have to rent the generators, but if they ran off power, so we'd need to know what percent of that $1 of rental is fuel and what percent is rental? And then of the fuel part, how much do we save by going to electricity?
Yeah, and in, in total, it, it's, it's pretty significant, about 10 times.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Public Comic.
Our first speaker is Nikki Nushka.
Hi, Nikki.
Hello, twice in one night. So with regards to the agenda, the item on the agenda, and I appreciate the city staff and the report, I very much believe that, you know, we do need to particularly focus on the western part of the landslide. They're moving, as you heard, you know, three to five inches still a week. And those wells, two of them have pinched. They do need to help. So I would appreciate your support in, with the staff recommendation of, of the 1.1 million dollars. I also have a couple of questions and maybe, you know, something to worth thinking about. One of them is with regards to the future activities is, and the additional, you know, wells that were discussed, could any of the brick money be used for those activities? I would assume that, you know, the plan has changed. We've learned a lot of things over the last year or so. And if this new activity might be, you know, worth considering. And then lastly, with regards to the FEMA funding, I saw the agenda, the timeline, and, and I was very encouraged. But are there any impacts from the federal budget perspective and the fact that we are in CR and we're not going to have a fiscal year 25 budget come until probably April? Would, would that have an impact to this effort at all? And lastly, to Councilmember Peristam's comment, I, you know, and I think a lot of you already know this, but I think continuing pressure on CPUC with regards to the whole energies, re-energizing the area is going to be important. And I think they have a meeting coming up on December 19th and open houses for energy on January 7th and February 7th. So please advocate. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Ara, do you want to comment on Nikki's comment on the, what budget cycle the FEMA grant gets? I thought that was already previous, that was currently appropriated funds, doesn't require the 25 budget?
Right, there, there's been no indication to me that, that the funds would be pulled back. This is all part of the winter storms that occurred previously, and it's all part of the disaster aid funding. So from what I'm being told, it is, we're still moving forward with the, the requests. I have not had any indication otherwise. In regards to the brick grant?
Brick grant would be the next one?
The, these other projects are not eligible. Putting in more wells, the, the scope of the brick grant is very specific. We already amended the application once to adjust it for the, the wells in the Portuguese Bend area. However, it doesn't prevent us from applying for other brick grants or hazard mitigation grants for some of these other long-term or future items. So that is something that is on our radar. We've got to keep track. The hazard mitigation grant program is only, only rolls out whenever there's a federally declared disaster in California. And then when that happens, then CAL OES gets a, a certain pot of money, and then they disperse it, they open it up for applications. The brick grant is a very competitive grant, a very competitive grant. We will pursue, we intend to pursue. We will pursue, we intend to pursue other brick grant opportunities to try to secure some funding for some other components of our de-watering efforts.
And currently, what's our best estimate and when we would see the majority of the 46 million of the original brick grant?
And Ramsey, maybe you can help me with that. Right now, we've received, and it's a reimbursement, if I'm not mistaken, and it's a, we've, we've been allocated...
Oh, we're spending it, so I'm not, that's not a problem.
This is, this is very specific to just the brick grant and those de-watering and the project that we had, the hydrologers. They released approximately $2 million for, for design development, and so the remaining, it was originally $23 million, but when the scope of the project changed because we had to do some emergency hydrologers, they reduced the amount to 16 million, and we can't go back and ask for more money under that application.
Yes, and the critical path in terms of receiving the next set of approvals for the construction funding is to re-scope the project. That depends on the outcome of the current emergency measures. As you may recall, some of the locations of the hydrologers would no longer be feasible given the rates of movement. So we need to go through that process, re-scope them, relocate, and potentially even use some additional solutions so that we can then proceed with final design and request construction funding.
Okay.
The assurance I want to give to the council and to the community is the brick grant is still active. It hasn't been withdrawn, or we haven't been determined to be ineligible or disqualified. So we are continuing to have those conversations along with all the other conversations we're having.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Is Jeff Bassler.
Hi, Jeff.
Congratulations on your promotion, Mayor Bradley.
Thanks.
Pro Tem Seo, and good to see you again, Barbara Perera. Welcome aboard. This is the first time I've seen either of you. Welcome to the council. My name is Jeff Bassler. I'm the president of Abate Local 19, and I'm also on the state board of Abate, California. Abate is the leading motorcycle rider rights advocate organization in the state, and so I'm here on behalf of Palos Verdes Drive. I've kind of addressed most of what I have to say to you because it's hurt me for months. This closure to motorcycles on that stretch is a great concern to us, not just because the safety or the liability of the city and such with respect to that road, but the precedent it sets to other communities that have areas that motorcycles like to frequent and may not want to have motorcycles around. So they could use your premise as a justification to close their roads. So it's important to us that this is a very short-term solution. You have presented a six-month period at which time you wanted to do what you could and evaluate, and that's where we're at today. We're at the end of our six months. You have a proposal by staff to increase it for three more months. That is not particularly desirable to us, but we do understand the situation at the same time. We are likely to have most of our rain in the next two months, so I might propose that you extend it for two months, reevaluate, perhaps add another month to it if we have a particularly rainy season. But in my position, I'm not just here to tell you we want our road open. I'm on the other side telling other motorcycle riders and organizations, do not sue the city of Rancho Palos Verdes right now. We're trying to work through this. And so we don't want others to get impatient and forward, and the shorter the term that you could have this closed, the better it is for your position and for me to argue on your behalf with other organizations. So I encourage you to strongly evaluate the duration you're talking about extending this closure because we do not want to have other people jumping the gun and creating more problems for the city. It's been a tough situation historically, like you heard that there are other two-wheel vehicles that have been on the street. They're not generally being ticketed. It's more of a liability protection for the city, but it's also precedent-setting for other cities. It's like Mulholland, they might declare, oh, this is a rockslide area. It's not safe for motorcycles to ride and block off all motorcycle riding on Mulholland. And that would be a terrible precedent and situation for riders that really enjoy the windy roads of Mulholland. That's just one example, but there's lots of examples through the state that I can name, but please evaluate a shorter time period. Thank you.
Thank you, and I can guarantee you, we are trying to figure out how to get that road open to everyone, two-wheel, one-wheel, bicycles as safely as we can.
I'm kind of in a situation where Mayor Crookshank was always pushing for, okay, what point do we need to get to to get our utilities to bring back supply that we are now at a good level? And we're kind of at the same point with the road.
Right.
We need to have some insight.
Our next speaker is Gordon Leon.
Good evening, Gordon.
Gentlemen, welcome new council members, Steve and George. First, I wanted to say, right now, we have 10 wells operational. They're operational on generators, and, and those 10 wells, well, actually, yeah, 10 wells are consuming about $17,000 worth of propane per month. When they run on electricity, our 20 wells would consume $2,400 of electricity per month, and so that's kind of the difference. Now, to that end, we've sent a letter to both the, both SCE and the CPUC, trying to get our wells electrified, and we have gotten maybe a little bit of fraction. It might be false traction, but Selena's gotten back to us and asked for locations and, and which wells we need to electrify. We've given them a list. I'm hoping that we can start working with their engineering on perhaps some solutions there. And we've also shared those letters with, with Ramsey and the, and our public works, and, and so we're working it from our side, too. Lastly, you know, the Aklad wells traditionally have not produced as much water as over in Klondike. The geology is very different there, and, and there's right now three wells operation, let's see, yeah, three wells operational on the Avaloni Cove landslide, and, and their production rate is spotty at best. I know that we need to drill more holes. I would really hope that we get a recommendation to put more wells in, but right now, the track record of those deep de-watering wells on our side are not very good. With that, if you have any questions, I just wanted to step in here and clarify a few things.
I guess I, I do have a question for you, Gordon. I know we allocated potentially loaning Aklad funds to help with both the, the current wells, but also potentially drill more wells and with some of the winterization in the Aklad AOR. I know you guys haven't requested that. What's the status of that?
So our geologist has, has emphasized to have us focus on actually trying to get more of our own wells working rather than drilling new ones. And with the current situation associated with electricity, if we were just to go and drill the six new wells that, that we were going to borrow the money for, we'd go broke for, you know, fuel bills, and that's the reason why it's had the kibosh on that. Now, with respect to the surface drainage, we have completed a stormwater detention plant or tank in one of our fissures. The plan there is to actually pump the water out to get it over the hill. We've put in one culvert down at Narcissa and, and Cinnamon. We'll finish that project hopefully in the next few weeks. We have just installed yesterday and today a 42-inch culvert under Vandalip Drive to get the water down Klondike, excuse me, Kelvin Canyon. And so there is that activity ongoing, and in lieu of, of drilling the more wells, we have been doing the surface drainage projects and will continue to do so.
So do you, because the city's continued to set aside the funds that we allocated to potentially loan to Aklad, do you foresee Aklad taking advantage of that loan? Or should we redistribute those funds that have kind of been set aside? You know, we're obligations and expenditures here.
Well, I would appreciate it if you didn't take it just yet.
Okay.
Because you'll just spend it.
Of cour-, oh, we will. Absolutely.
And we always think that we can spend it on better things than you can.
I know.
And, and even when we do spend it, you're going to then join us in paying, paying the loan off.
We are.
And so we've been sort of taking the long view on, on this one. Now, that said, we did, I have one ask that I've been working with staff. You've got two of these wonderful oversized generators that are down on the Avaloni Cove slide that are right next to Aklad wells, and we'd like to plug into them, and we think that you'd hardly even notice the difference. And right now, Ramsey and I are working it out, but I hope that you guys nod in the vertical plane that this is a good idea and you want them to help work with us.
Understood. Any other questions?
All right.
Mr. Leon? Thank you, Gordon.
Our next speaker is Vietzum, Eva Albuja.
Vietzum?
Good evening again. One of the things I looked at with your breakdown of costs is that, you know, it's 7.3 million for the road repairs for PB Drive South. That is something that we should be taxing businesses for. If you look at hotels, you look at restaurants, all of them are adding taxes. They all have subtaxes. You go to a restaurant, and there is a tax there on top of the tax that they all add on. Trader Joe's, Terranaya, Trump Restaurants, Markets, all in Rancho PB, all use that road. They should be sharing the cost of the $7.3 million tag that we're all carrying as citizens. It should be passed on to the businesses, and they can pass it on to their consumers. There should be a toll tax for everyone driving that road. We need to expand on revenue to help this because we cannot put this expense only on the people that live in the landslide. This is a huge problem, but yet we have hikers come in, we have tourists come in. They all get to enjoy our sights, but it's on our backs. The landslide is a cancer, and it will grow if we don't put more attention to it. And yes, it's a big bill because we're playing catch-up of over 30 years of ignoring it. So now we need to expand that cost to other people who enjoy our land. It has to be open to others. Another thing is the tax assessment that we have to carry. I'm in the Klondike district. We need to expand that tax to others. We should not be the one that has to pay our mortgages, our tax bill increased, and it's not, everybody else is also suffering, but they're not paying that part of the share. Only the, the West Side is. We need to reevaluate these funds and get more people participating in this cost. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kit Song. Kid who?
Hello, can you hear me? Okay?
We can hear you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to take up more time. You're just going to speak in favor of the staff recommendations, agree pretty much with all of them. What's noticeably absent, I think, in the efforts around getting SoCal Edison to the table is our other governmental partners, including the county and our state representatives. At stakeholder's meeting, we heard a lot of discussion around what Aklad was doing, what the city was doing, all different efforts. And I guess my only ask would be, since this is a very high priority item for us, is to try to engage and ask you as the city council members to engage all of our local representatives to present a unified effort, because the SoCal Edison effort is really critical right now to a lot of the efforts. I think to echo what others have said, and you already know, sustainable funding for this is a huge issue. We've been talking about this now for about a year, and I do think that needs to be a very high priority. I think I'd go back again to the earlier speaker who talked about the concept of a unified organizational entity that could do this, and I do support the concept of toll taxes along PB Drive South to help support this now for a long time, but I recognize that that's a county function and not one relegated to the city. So just speaking in behalf of the staff report and in favor of their recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Kit. And, and I can guarantee you, we are trying to leverage every portion of government to try to put pressure on SoCal Edison. I know Mayor Pro Tem Seo has had many discussion with many of our representatives up and down the chain to try to see what we can do, and unfortunately, it has not proved, not resulted in many changes, but we are going to keep up the pressure.
We could add yet.
Okay.
So we're going to keep...
Council deliberations.
Mayor, one correction in response to Councilmember Lewis's question about the cost difference between using SCE power and generators and fuel. I state, I read my notes, I read the wrong line on my notes. I stated it was 10 times the cost. It's actually closer to four to five times the cost, so I apologize for that, but wanted to correct the record.
Okay. Councilman Peristam, comments?
No, but I'm ready for a motion. There's no other comments.
Councilman Lewis, you have any comments? Councilman Seo?
Yes, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'm sorry. Gosh.
No worries, no worries. Well, first and foremost, the biggest thing is this, I think we have to get the stabilization and consistency, and I think in our conversations, I think we're forgetting that, and I know SCE and SoCal Gas, they want that, and they want to see it, and then they have their own experts that are analyzing the movement. And Mike made a good case of the velocity and it's petering out or, I guess, stabilizing in a flat graph, but ultimately, we have to get to that consistency across the board in the, in the whole complex. So if we only have a third of it, Klondike Canyon stopping, basically being stabilized, and we still have, you know, four to five inches in Portuguese Bend and Avaloni Cove, we're still not there. The problem is, we still have the problem in our laps, and it's still moving, and it's not consistent, and it keeps on moving to a point where utilities aren't going to come in and place those poles and things like that. And Ara and the staff knows it. I know Mayor, or the mayor knows it as well, talking to a lot of these members that, that come to these meetings. And ultimately, if we don't stabilize it for consistency, we're just not going to get the effect that we need to bring them back. And I know it sounds weird, but we have to spend money to save money at this point because if we don't stabilize it, they don't turn on the electricity, and then we have to keep spending $10,000 a month. So in that vein of thought, I know the staff is asking for 1.1 million at this point. My suggestion, and my suggestion to my colleagues, is that we bump it up and add 4.9. And the reason why I say that is because at this point, if we leave those wells hanging in Avaloni Cove, which we have three of, they're basically not going to do much. They have to be added to, and I think if we get three to four more, that, you know, Mike and Bill were saying, I think that would be, that would make it more effective in terms of drainage and, and the actual pumping of gallons of water out of that, out of that site, and we can get an imperity to Klondike Canyon in that area. And I think at that point, we can make a solid case to SCE and Southern California Gas and say, hey, look, we did our part, we did the best that we can with the money that we have, and we stabilized it, and now at that point, we can make the, the argument, say, because we stabilized it, CPUC and everybody else, please make the case for us to turn it back on. And I think that's the best way to do it. If we don't spend this money now, I think we're going to be doing half measures, and I'd hate to get to a point where we don't spend the money and things start to fall apart, those, those wells that we already drilled. Those those wells that we already drilled in Avaloni Cove start to shear because we don't have other backup force multipliers in terms of the wells that we could have spent the money for. Now, in terms of the money, I know, I know it's tight and I know the city is tight right now. But what I suggest is this, and I'm going to ask Ramsey a question. In terms of CIP fund, right now, and I know Vina, I spoke to you about it. In terms of priorities, or are there priorities where we can make up 4.9 to kick it down, like kick a project down the road where it's not a priority or something that's going to affect public safety that we can afford right now?
There are some CIP projects that we have not made the progress on that we had anticipated setting out at the beginning of the year, obviously due to various circumstances, that we will not be spending the money in this fiscal year. I don't know if it would total that amount. I think it would be closer to probably about 3 million.
Okay. Yeah, so my suggestion for my colleagues at this point is I think we should give our staff and our team the solution. They have the solutions in our hand. We have the solutions. We know what we need to do to get to parity with those other wells in Klondike in that area in the eastern side of the landslide. So my suggestion is we give them the money so that they can actually go and do the drilling that we need to get to the stabilization and consistency that we have. We have the money and we're not spending on CIP. I know it's not, you know, the 15 million or 20 million that we probably need to put a permanent solution to this. But at this point, I think we should spend the money now, get the stabilization and make our argument. Because if we don't, I feel like if we don't get to this point and we don't exhaust all of our avenues of solutions, I think we're going to regret it. And at least at the end, if it doesn't work, we can say that we tried to do it and we let it go. But at this point, I think we're at a juncture where we are seeing success with the solutions that we have. So instead of the 1.1, I'm asking for an additional 4.9 to make it even six tonight. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Okay, I'm going to jump in on this. I understand your sentiments, Mayor Protem, but I can't support that. We're looking for 1.1 for O and M for the next three months. If we amortize that over the entire year, that's about $4.5 million just for keeping the wells that we have open and continuing to power them. Adding more wells to it at this point, I don't think we can afford that. I think we need to have some reserve around to continue to have, to be able to fund the unknown unknowns as we go into winter. Additionally, taking the money from the other CIP projects, we're already seeing some of our roadways crumbling that have not been repaved and some of the things that we deferred, the the safety measures on PB Drive East, to name a couple off the top of my head that we haven't done, to take all the funds from the rest of the city and say that we're not going to do and continue with any CIP efforts for the rest of the city and throw everything into Avaloni Cove, I think would be unwise at this point. I think we have to continue to take care of the rest of the city as we address the emergency in the Portuguese Bend landslide area. I'm in favor of current staff report and allocating the additional 1.1, 1.2 million to continue to maintain what we currently have. But at this point, I don't think we can afford to go ahead and start drilling more wells as much as I would like to. I just don't think we have the current funds to be able to do that. Councilman Lewis?
Yeah, well, my questions are not as much, were formed in my head before Mayor Protem spoke. So I'm not directly addressing what he said. But I was thinking about the math on this power, which plainly is a very costly and compelling pivot point for us. And I'm sure, and I'm embarrassing myself as a new person here, and I'm sure the geologists and experts have thought of this, but there's obviously points at which we have power that are adjacent to the slide area. And we have different pumps pumping at various different rates right now. And if, even with the corrected numbers I got, it's still a 75 to 80% savings to use power. So well, just at the farthest extension of power, if it could relieve pressure, artesian pressure within the slide, even if it was only half as effective as one within the slide, you'd still be saving 10 to 15% on your cost per gallon pumped. And so I wonder if we've thought about that. Are there opportunities to have, because that would leverage our dollars a lot further if we had opportunities for wells directly next to the slide area where the water might still reach. And then, you know, we could pump that out more cheaply. That's one thought I had. And then the next thought I had is, well, and maybe taking into account what Mayor Protem said is that we have a certain amount of money to spend and we want to spend it with the most bang for our buck. And so I'd want to know what the resistance really is from the utility companies. Is it a liability question? Is it just bureaucracy and they're not getting to it? If it's a liability question, and I don't want, don't throw a blowtorch at me, city council, city councillor, but is there some kind of limited indemnification we could provide so that they would be confident to allow us to run power into this area and they wouldn't be on the hook for damages at 80% savings? That's a lot of self insurance we would earn really quickly running power in and self insuring ourselves against a fire or something. I don't know if that's possible or not, but I'm just throwing it out there. And I would also wonder if they're knowing our situation, taking no action and taking no action for no reason, is that a willful or tortuous harming of our people and our city? So those are just my thoughts.
I can say this much, I've been in contact with legal counsel for SCE. We're talking about sharing information right now. I think there is an interest on their part to work with us to deal with the de-energization issues. I think it's too early to know if if some sort of mutual reciprocal indemnification agreement could be entered into. Public agencies, as a general rule, can't commit torts because we have a certain amount of sovereign immunity from that unless there's a statutory basis for that liability issue we really haven't looked into. But I think at this point, we're continuing to work with Edison. And at least we're talking at the lawyer level and I think we're talking at the staff level. I'm not sure that that is a very adequate answer to your question, but I think that's where we stand right now.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to piggyback off of what Councilmember Lewis was saying. I did have those conversations. I asked those exact questions and there were hard no's. And the reason why and some of the reasons were, are you guys going to be responsible if somebody dies in a fire? Are you going to basically take liability for that? You know, so, you know, we've had these, I've had these hard conversations with them. And the ultimate thing that they'll consistently push back on is we need to see stabilization and consistency. If we don't have that, they're not going to put it in. And that's why I'm saying that it's kind of a catch 22 for us because if we don't spend the money, we don't get there. And if we don't get the electricity, if we need electricity to save money. So I know this is a big ask and I know Mayor is against it, but I think we need to spend the money. This is not an exorbitant amount and I think we can, we can definitely afford to do this, especially for a couple more wells that we need. In terms of that, if we do turn, the flip side of this is if we get those wells in, they stabilize and they turn electricity back on for O and M, we save money. Four to five times less than what we do actually pay. But we need to get there and we can't get there without pumps. And I can almost guarantee if we don't put wells down there, those three on Avalon and Conde, they're going to shear. And we're just going to basically lose money on that. So I'd rather not throw away the money. I'd rather invest it now, make the investment and then see if it works. And if it doesn't, then we call it a day, but at least we tried. And that's my, that's my two cents on it. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you would be willing to go lower in terms of money? Because I know I'm at 4.9. Is there something that you would move on?
But my, my concern is that to date, with the exception of 2.2 million from this county supervisor's office, we have received zero external funding to help with any of this. And we are quickly approaching a total spend for the Portuguese Bend area that's going to equate to our entire annual budget that we will have spent. And continuing to spend well beyond our ability to fund it, I think, is just imprudent. There are other things in this city that need to be done and we need to look at how we can make sure that we take care of the other 15,000 homes in this city. I know we have 400 homes and residents that are hurting and we're trying to do everything we can. But I think we have to make sure that we also look at what would be equitably across the city. So I think continuing to maintain and to redrill and to maintain the wells that we have to make sure that they don't shear off and to redo during the O and M that staff has asked for, I think, is prudent to continue to maintain our current investment. If you looked at some of the de-watering numbers that you saw over on the West Side versus the East Side, we haven't seen the type of deceleration even with the wells that we've put in on the, on the West Side. So to put additional wells in there, while I think they might help some, I don't know that you can show a straight line that another well will bring those down since we've seen it already plateau out and those numbers become tangential to the numbers that we're seeing over on the East Side. So I still don't think that we can afford to do it as much as I would like to. If we had additional surplus, it would be great if we had somebody from the county, the state or the federal helping us with this. I think it would be great to continue to do more. I just can't support it at this time. Councilman Parisam, oh, sorry. Councilman Ferrara, Councilwoman, sorry. My bad.
Who am I?
Yeah.
Council. What is going to be left if we up it to the amount that Mayor Protem is talking about?
So it would take roughly half of the current unaccounted, unallocated surplus off the table.
Which is?
About $12 million right now.
Correct. So general fund has 12.9 excess reserve and CIP has 28 million fund balance, but that's allocated for the next five years for the CIP program.
So it takes about.
So that would take approximately what from the overall total surplus?
So what I'm suggesting is take it from CIP. So my suggestion and the reason why I asked Ramsey was to take it from CIP, the projects that we're not going to execute this year. And if he, if he can, I guess, kick the can down on, kick the can down the road for three projects or $3 million worth of CIP funds, then we take it from CIP. So we have 25 left as opposed to the 28 that we have now.
Okay. So I'm beginning to think it might be worth taking a chance on doing that because the, that would allow us to take so much more water out of the area than, than the 1 million and give us a chance of really slowing it down. I mean, that's what you're trying to do, right?
I think we're all trying to slow it down.
Yeah.
So maybe a counterproposal, Mayor Protem, would be to vote on current staff recommendation and then give staff an action to come back and reprioritize everything in the current CIP and take off projects in the '24, '25 CIP cycle that we think are less important than continues putting money into the de-watering wells. So for instance, you know, maybe we defer repaving the major thoroughfares for another three, whatever it be, I'm just using as an example with that, and see how we can reallocate the current funds so we don't continue to eat into our reserves at a rate that we will not be able to replenish them.
For me, the whole reason I brought this up now was because I know time is of the essence and it's urgent. And if we, I think, you know, our staff is amazing and I think our next meeting is going to be mid-January. So that's basically a solid month of no work. And if they, these guys have to pack up or our drillers have to pack up and come back, that's going to eat up more time. That's two months that we're going to just basically lose. So I do like the idea, but for me, the time is of the essence. I think it's an urgency thing more than anything else and I want to make sure that we do our part before the rains start coming to get those drills in the ground. And I completely understand what you're saying about the projects in the city and that is not lost on me. But I just want to make sure that we do everything that we possibly can, especially with, you know, three, four million that we can add to this to put three more wells, four more wells down there and make sure that we actually get the solution that we need. And if it doesn't work, then it doesn't work. But at least we, you know, gave it our best effort. And I know it's, I hate to say this, but it's not going to break the bank. We're going to be okay. We're going to have to table a couple of projects, but at least we'll stabilize it and it falls on us to go and lobby for this money that we're going to get backfill to. And I'm optimistic about, I'm cautiously optimistic about getting more money. But at the same time, I'd like to spend the money now to make sure or allocate it at least so that the staff has it available to them and they're not going to wait a month and two months for it. That's, that's, that's my ultimate thing, Mr. Mayor.
I don't share your optimism after having done this for six years, both on the Planning Commission and on the City Council. I have had more conversations than I care to remember and we have seen no action and no funding available from any other source. So based on that, I think we have to be prepared to live within our own means and take care of ourselves and continuing to do this is, is, I think, what we have to bank on. Maybe we can hope to get outside funds. I guess if that's something that you want to see, I would really, before we vote on that, I'd really like to understand the projects that we would be canceling in this cycle to be able to fund that.
Is it canceling or is it putting them down the road?
It would be just a cascade of them down. Yes.
And Mr. Mayor, maybe this might address your concerns and your desire and as well as the Mayor Protem. And I do want to echo what, what Mayor Protem has indicated that right now Malcolm is on standby. They've, they've pretty much completed their task. And if, if the staff recommendations are adopted, as is tonight, they're going to be asked to, to leave the site so that we no longer need them for drilling purposes.
Other than the redrilling of the wells that have been sheared off?
Well, yes, we'll work on those, but for the most part, they will take the rigs and so forth.
Won't have multiple rigs on site.
So, so, but that said, what we could do if the council is desirous of, of funding some more wells, three wells or so, what we could, and you want to take it from the CIP, but we don't have a month because the next meeting is January 21st. You could authorize the funding and then what we'll do is we'll come back on the 21st with an amendment to the CIP or identify the projects that we will scale back. And the council can then look at, look at the CIP and decide what you want to do to accommodate that, that reappraisal of the funds. So we can just, we'll split up, do the funding, fund it today if that's the council's desire and then we'll come back and identify where that, how that money will be saved from, from.
But it'll, it'll be a bitty to comply when you come back to us because we will already have done it. So you're just going to tell us what we are voting on tonight that we're not going to do.
We'll, we'll present what we recommend, but the council can look at all the projects and determine where they're going to get that three, four, or $5 million.
Councilman Parisam.
Thank you, Mayor. Now I do have comments because we're in a very different conversation. I want to go back to Mike. When you spoke earlier about we need to, if we want to improve the flow taking out of the West Side there, what you didn't say is any expectation that our success on the East Side would be replicated on the West Side. Is it a different geologic structure? Is it, is it, we took a long time to get to our success. To duplicate that and just make an assumption that we, our wells, that we're going to be more successful, I like it, but. I like it, but I, I don't think it's that simple and I'm not comfortable going forward with anything. I understand that this, the, moving the money from the, the CIP. But the other side of that is an expectation of what we may get out of this as an investment if we're going to accelerate that. Is there something we can do in the course of, before this comes back? If we, if we choose to, to go to the next meeting or the, or at some point in the future that we can easily, we can see the CIP projects? Is there some evaluation we can do to say an expectation would be X or a range that would improve our, our, our flow of pumping water out? Putting you on the spot, I understand that.
You want me to answer, apply to that?
I'm just going to say, I think. Anybody that can contribute to the conversation.
Yes. I have thoughts about it, but I'd, I'd like to hear Bill's thoughts on that first as a primary on this.
Yeah, so let me explain where we're actually at in, in the extraction model is. So we've, we've proven in conjunction with K-Clad that we can stop and severely slow down the landslide with a certain density of wells. We've, we've done three wells over in A-Clad. It is slightly different geology over there. They are slightly less producers, but they're still producing some benefit which will come with time. What we don't have is enough wells between the, the existing wells on the PBL side versus A-Clad, basically from the ski jump eastward. So you've got a whole slew of high-moving points there, which is the center of the warm spot that is not being drained. And so currently, the five wells that have been proposed to make a connection all the way across the whole slide, I think you will see a similar effect as you do between wells one through six on the east side of the PBL. So, so the current, the current scope is to add five from the ski jump over towards the east. And that's, you know, Archery Club is a key point there. There's three planned in Archery Club. There's two planned in Sacred Cove near the top because we can't get to the bottom in Sacred Cove. It's just, just too hard to get rigs there. So we continue pumping in A-Clad. I think, I think the benefit of A-Clad in the future, you'll see more bang for the buck. Like Gordon was saying, if we do wells higher up into the slope. But that's, to me, that's a later phase. And you see now we have this big blank spot across the toe. We've already proven we can do things at the toe, but we don't have enough wells between the ski jump and our last well over there, which is a five. So if we did that, I think you will see a similar benefit and reduction. And, and basically what this does, just so you know, is it would severely decrease your maintenance costs on PV drive because if it's not moving like it is on the very west side and we can slow it down, then the repaving, the reshaping would definitely get reduced.
Okay, thank you. Would, would coordination between A-Clad and the city's efforts help this process? I mean, I, I know we talk to them all the time.
Yeah, I can speak to that.
But is there something, is there something that if, if we're going to try to take this initiative, is there other steps, coordination, even number of wells, changing of location of wells? Would that be something to be undertaken or would make sense to undertake?
I think you've heard from our geologists the importance of a second band of deep de-watering wells or perhaps shallow de-watering wells, landward of PV drive south. And a, a majority of those are going to fall to A-Clad. So my recommendation would be that A-Clad's geologist prepare a proposal of what that could look like for evaluation and coordination with the city's geologist so that we can have a coordinated attack on this at the toe of the slide and further up.
Okay, so I, I understand the urgency from the vice, the vice chair or Mayor Pro Tem, but I'd like to see this information fought through and see what would make sense to expedite this. So I, we're, we're backing off tonight, in my eyes, we're backing off tonight, but we are taking a serious look at this to move this, this idea forward and to see if it would make sense to make this additional investment. And for tonight, though, I, I agree with the mayor that the 1.1 commitment to keep us going and not to slow down at this moment in time is, is what I'm prepared to support. But to, to do a little bit more on where this may go at a faster pace, I'm, I am interested in that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Lewis.
Thank you, Member Parisian. You kind of went in, in direct detail where I was going, which is that, you know, to, to make such a major financial step, I, I, I see the spirit and, and the rationality. If, if we were to do this and it succeeded and that was enough to persuade the utilities to restore power, it would pay for itself very quickly. But to take this shot, we can't miss. And so as I sit here today, I think about two things. And, and, you know, gradualism and kicking the can down the road or time-honored traditions, and that's not really what I'm advocating. I'm just advocating being really short-footed. So if I, my sense is that there's a, collect, there seems to be a, a momentum towards approving the staff recommendation tonight of the 1.1. Now, if we were to augment that to any level in, in total or in part of what Mayor Pro Tem suggested, I think we would need to be sure that we had a very, very clear targeted, this is what we're exactly going to spend this money on because this is a high-impact point that will assuredly work. I don't know if the last conversation established that or not. I do know that we, we need to take this on, but we have four weeks till our next meeting. There's no rain in the forecast for the next eight or 10 days. That's, gets us about a third of the way there. If we asked staff to really prepare, how could an incremental spend be absolutely most effectively spent? And would further discussions with the utilities get us some assurance that if we did this and it worked, that they would move? Because time is of the essence. Because when we run out of money, we run out of money and then the pumps stop. I mean, that happens someday if we don't get some kind of sustainable solution in place. So that's why I say if we take this shot, we can't miss. So I feel that we'd want a more comprehensive analysis of it. And I don't mean that to be an internal postponement. I need that to happen and then come back and address it in earnest, if I'm making any sense.
I have a question. If, if we were to prove that, approve the current recommendation of the 1.1?
1.1 million per operations and maintenance of the current wells.
Are the, are they going to take up their, the, the people that are working on it? Are they going to go home for a while and then come back?
So Ramsey, I believe we have two rigs working or do we have three?
One.
One, it's down to one now?
Yes.
Okay. So I believe what would happen is that that one would be still on site, redrilling one of the wells, but then if we didn't allocate more funds, that it would move offsite. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So then?
So we would have to then get the teams back out, we would have to bring them back out.
Is that going to be more expensive in and of itself by having them go away and then come back than keeping them now?
Yes.
See, to me, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
By, by how much, Ramsey?
I don't have an exact cost today, but we can run that analysis.
Ramsey, if I?
You're still putting in one.
Yeah, Ramsey, I think it was told to me that if they leave and come back, it's $200,000.
Okay, not a small amount, but not a huge amount.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just a, just a rebuttal. We have three wells right now, 10, 9A, and 11, and nine already sheared. So let's say this movement keeps going and we leave those drills there or those wells there.
Nine didn't shear, nine just didn't produce anything, is that correct?
One of the, one of them sheared, right?
Nine sheared, it was relocated to location 9A and that location is pinching.
It's pinching.
But, but it is, it was producing well, 9A was producing well, correct?
9A was producing, yes. And, and I, I want to just take a moment to remind the council that it is not necessarily the gallons per minute that is the measure of how effective a well is. It is the reduction in pore pressure and sometimes that can be achieved even if the
Sure.
production is low.
My point, my point is this, Mr. Mayor, is let's say we leave it with just these three hanging out and we, we let the land just basically keep going. It's these, I'm pretty sure 10, 9A, and 11 are going to eventually pinch. And we wasted $3 million bucks at that point. But if we put in the wells now and we put three, four more in to actually alleviate the pressure, I think that just makes sense scientifically to save money as well as put, invest into something that we know might happen. I understand that, you know, there is some apprehension regards to spending this money, but we need to invest it and we've been putting it off for a while. If we keep on doing analysis that we've been doing and we've been talking about this for ages and our people have been complaining forever because we've been doing analysis paralysis. And at this point, we need action to actually put the wells in the ground and make sure that we get the water out of the ground and alleviate the pressure. And my, my fear is this, is that we wait until these guys come back, we pay extra 200 grand, we make a decision, and then we have to drill five instead of three. So at this point, you know, if we don't, I, I feel like if we don't spend the money now, we're just going to eat it at the end and it's not going to make any of a difference because we're going to lose three wells. So that's, I think that's my point.
So if you, if we allocate an additional $5 million tonight on top of the 4.4 million of O and M, if you did a straight-line projection of what we're currently allocating for the first quarter, that'll come to roughly $9 million, $9.5 million. That will be the majority of the unallocated, our current unallocated reserves at the end of the year.
How did you get to nine?
Huh?
How, I thought we were talking about one and a half versus four.
The O and M of the current wells with the, with the cost of the generators, assuming, so Cal Edison doesn't come back, we're spending about $1.1 million a quarter is what staff is asking for, for the first quarter of '25, basically to March. If you say we have to spend that every quarter, that comes out to about $4.5 million for the year to do that. If we spend an additional five on top of that to put in more wells, we're spending nine, nine-ish million, $9.5 million, which would be the vast majority. So it would be $9.5 million of the 12 million unallocated reserve. So we would be drawing down that reserve once again, almost to nothing. Now, that's assuming that we continue with the other CIP projects and we don't defer those indefinitely for the rest of the city, which is something that is certainly within our power to do. It's not that I don't like the idea of drilling more wells. I just don't think we can afford to do it at this point.
Well, I think part of the, the record, the, part, part of the thinking of doing the, the additional money now is that we won't have to use all of that money down the road, that we can get things turned back on.
That's, that's a gamble. There is no.
That is a gamble.
There, there is no data to say that that will be true.
Well.
Ultimately, I think, Mr. Mayor, this is my, this would be my last statement, is if we don't get to stability for the, basically the western portion of Portuguese Bend and Abalone Cove, you, you can kiss everything else goodbye in terms of SE and gas coming back in. That's just, I think that's just a given. I think everybody knows that. And if we can't show that we're, we're not stabilizing the ground there and we only have it in Klondike, PBL, and Abalone Cove is not, they're not going to get the electricity back. That's just ultimately what's going to happen. So if we don't, we don't make the investment now, we're just not going to get it. And if we don't put the wells in to alleviate the pressure and get the water out, let's say we do do it and our quote-unquote gamble works and we can make the case and they come back and start the electricity again and the gas back on and everybody's happy. We can spend a lot less, a lot less on road maintenance as well as keeping these pumps going and these de-watering wells functional. So my, my whole point is let's invest it, take the chance, and then get to a point where we can make the argument and say that the landslide is actually stable. So that's, that's my whole thing. I understand your point and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Ramsey, if we allocated an additional $5 million tonight, how many wells would that be, would we be able to put in in the Sacred Cove, Archery Range along the toe there?
If I may suggest, Mayor, I, I would suggest considering, in addition to the 1.1 for maintenance, about $3 million roughly to install an additional three wells. We could then come back in January. That would keep us busy until January to come back. So that's, that's what I would say is probably about three wells for roughly $3 million.
So the increase to ask would be 4.1?
And that would be without a contingency. If you wanted to consider a contingency, that would be closer to 4.5.
And I'm okay with three.
Additional to the 1.1. Yes, Councilman Lewis.
In thinking about the utilities and their position on the stabilization, I don't know how the grid is laid out here. I know houses were reduced in, in chunks over time. We've stabilized some parts of this landslide. Is there no good faith from the utilities to restore power to some portions where we have wells? And then we'd have more confidence that they would restore it if we stabilized the rest? Or is it one branch and it's either on or off for the whole thing for the wells? I just don't know the engineering of the, of the electrical grid there.
We have been pressing hard for SCE and SoCal Gas to restore the utilities in the Beach Club and the Seaview neighborhoods where you've heard stabilization has occurred. They haven't committed to doing that, although they are saying they are looking at things segment by segment and they're not looking at maybe energizing an entire area, but they are looking at doing maybe block by block, a house by house, something like that.
Let me, let me, because I think maybe in my earlier comments, we're being construed one way when I meant something different. As I hear you speak and you're talking about restoring neighborhoods' power, I'm talking about giving us power just to run the pumps on some kind of line. Not, and leaving aside for the moment, of course, we want to get the residents reactivated too. There's a lot more liability and a lot more risk with that. But is it just, can we run a cable to run the, the generator?
It, it, it sounds like, to me, that sounds realistic and, and why, why not? But they're saying, no, they're not able to do that.
Why are they saying no?
It's just safety concerns. To, to run a line in an area that they are not certain is stabilized, it still has a risk. We disagree, the city disagrees with them, but that's their position.
Okay. So I will make a motion to, I think we've exhausted our deliberations. I'm going to make a motion to accept staff recommendation, allocate 1.1 additional funds to the operation and maintenance of our current wells, receive and file, extend the emergency for initial 90 days, and continue the, the moratorium for one and two-wheeled vehicles for an additional 60 days, which will bring us back to roughly early February to readdress that. Excuse me? The moratorium is recommended for 90 days.
For the, for the prohibition of bicycles on?
Number 590.
And wheeled vehicles, it's 90 days.
Oh, I thought it was 60.
And the other two are 60 days.
Mr. Mayor, just a, it's a quick point of order, can we?
I'm sorry, 90 days, 60 days, I'm sorry. I got it reversed. So the motion is for 90 days for the, for the one and two-wheeled vehicles, which will bring us out to early March and then 90 days for the, or 60 days for the continuing of the emergency. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick point of order. May I make an amendment and a vote on the amendment first before your motion, if possible?
You want to make an amendment?
Amendment to, to the staff recommendation, which is number four. So it'll be approving 4.1. Vote on that first before we do on the. So it'll be approving four point one. Vote on that first before we do on the major motion.
You already have a motion on the floor. If it doesn't get seconded, then you can make a motion. Do I have a second on my motion?
I second.
Thank you.
But can I comment?
Sure.
Thank you. I like the idea. I really do. The, the idea, the Mayor Pro Tem's idea. I think it introduces a different discussion that we're having now, and I think there's merit to that. And I would, if, if this has to be added to the motion, actually, just maybe, I don't know how to do this, friendly amendment, that we, we ask for that additional information from the staff that puts us in a position to better analyze if, if a faster accelerated spend makes sense and what we would do if we had something on the table to react to.
If you'd like to make that as a friendly amendment, to add that on as direction to staff to come up with what we would defer on the current C I P plan to make additional funds available, and then a detailed plan of what they would go, how they would go implement this, I would accept that amendment, that amendment, or that, yeah, friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment, okay.
And to bring that back July, or January twenty first?
Yes, at the next available meeting, which would be the twenty first. Yeah, we already, and the consent calendar, I guess we already did cancel the meeting on the seventh, so yes.
Councilman Parisam?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferraro? Mayor Pro Tem Seo?
No.
Mayor Brad?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. This is a hard issue, and I think we're all very passionate about it. We've been going for almost three hours now. I would suggest we take a ten-minute break, come back a little bit before ten o'clock, and we will go through the last two items on the agenda.
How are you?
Thanks.
Tell your, your motorcycle friends. Yeah. No, Councilmember Ferraro left those for everybody. That'll keep me awake when I'm driving home.
You remember six months ago where things were? Great to see that they made some progress. But the safety hazards, what they just created on top of the old safety hazards. And, and you know, that's, that's even on YouTube and all the rest of, of, of all that type of bill. So even look at, you know, the, the supercars that are actually doing that, that's been posted on YouTube. So I'm just looking at it like, I, I get it, and we're fighting for you guys, you know, taking, taking the heat for you guys. But it's just like, that's what people are looking at too, is what if the supercars get too much? And then like you said, the other, the other city councils are actually sitting there trying to, you know, ban this thing, like this is gonna be a snowball. So eventually, as, as we get to California.
And by the way, Mayor Crookshank never got us back within 10 minutes. I just, if you're watching, John. Not that there's any competition between the former mayor and I.
No. None at all. Our next item is item number two, consideration and possible action to receive a status update on the city's Pano AI camera for Peninsula-wide Peninsula-wide wildfire detection services. Late correspondence was distributed earlier, and I do have one request to speak.
Okay. Staff report. Let's have a good news story.
I can actually give you that. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So my name is Luna Muhammad. Most of you know me by now. If you don't, great to meet you and welcome. I'm the emergency management coordinator for RPV. I'll be presenting on the Pano AI wildfire detection cameras, and I do have Lizzie Willmarth on the Zoom call as well, just in case there's any technical questions you have that I'm unable to answer. Just a little background on the program. Basically, the city signed into the program back in 2022 for initially three years and then extended to a five-year term. Each year costs to utilize not just have all four cameras, but to utilize all of the software and the expertise from Pano AI, 140,000 per year. For a total of 700,000. Some of the funding sources is Assembly Member Al Marachi, and I apologize if I mispronounced that.
Merzucci.
Merzucci, thank you. Part of the 1.5 million in state funding was used to help fund this project. A little about the camera installation. So the first two cameras were installed in May 2023, one at City Hall, one in Torrance. Those are just screenshots from the Pano AI 360 to give you some of the views. They obviously rotate and can see a lot more than that, but just giving you a little view. And then in August 2023, another camera was installed at Terreinea. And a fourth camera was set to be installed around the same time. However, there were several delays, which I'll get into shortly. Due to negotiations between too many parties in one kind of type of situation, SoCalGas, CalWater, ATC, and Pano AI, so I'll get into depth on that. So the reasons for the delays. SoCalGas delivers the power for the Pano AI camera. I know that sounds strange because we generally think power is from SoCalEdison, but they only need a couple amps to run the cameras. And SoCalGas was just, it was an opportune opportunity basically to capitalize and utilize SoCalGas without having to pay to get SoCalEdison all the way up there when they weren't there to begin with. CalWater owns the land, but American Tower Corporation, which I, the acronym ATC, owns the pole. So we have an owner of the pole and an owner of the land, and then SoCalGas is doing something to help and make this a little easier, but it makes it a little muddy also at the same time. And then Pano AI has the fourth camera to install there. So basically what this required is a bunch of agreements. And so there was a lot of back and forth to get multiple leases before you can get an agreement to ask for the permits and get authorization to get the permits to do the installation. With that said, with all of that, we have been able to finally move forward with this. The agreements are not all fully signed yet, but they have been finalized. So they're just kind of in hands getting signatures. This, the fourth camera will finally be installed by the end of January 2025, if not sooner. And that's kind of where we stand with all of that. And so I wanted to walk through a little bit about how the alerts work for Pano AI and then how the fourth camera installation and some other updates may help just overall in seeing how effective these cameras can be for wildfire detection and kind of get the data a little more solidified. So the cameras differentiate between different substances. There's kind of a two portions section to it. There's the cameras and then there's actual people who make sure what we're looking at is a wildfire. They can, the cameras by themselves can kind of block out most of the fog. They can do the same for some of the smoke and pollution that we'll see, but not all of it. Refinery smoke being one. They can catch wildfires. They can catch prescribed burns. And so they filter out to begin with, and then a person actually looks through what the alert was before it gets sent to firefighters, city management, and the like. Now, in 2024, there were 100 bus alerts, but the thing is, is that's largely because the cameras are 360, and so they're catching fires from areas that are not the peninsula. So most of those were fires, like a backyard fire or barbecue or something like that in Torrance. Some refinery smoke. There were two small fires in RPV that were caught by the cameras. One of those was in August 2023. The camera detected the smoke. The intelligence center confirmed it, and alerts were sent out to the firefighters and the city. That all occurred within six minutes. Firefighters responded and averted a crisis, and that's the goal of these cameras. I do stress that prevention is not always calculable. A small fire can turn into something that destroys an entire city pretty quickly. I have, in my career, seen several of those types of fires happen. So that's just one, my kind of two cents on that one as well. So fourth camera's getting installed. Good news. More good news is that Pano AI is working to geofence so that we're not getting those torrent alerts. Alluding back to what I was saying about really kind of narrowing down the data so we can better understand it. So that will reduce overall alerts, which is great, and it will also help us be able to better analyze the effectiveness of the system. Now, with that all said, I'm sure most of you have heard that back on December 10th, there was a structure fire on pomegranate. And the camera didn't catch that, so to speak, and a large reason, one was because the hill was blocking the view, but also because a structure fire is generally going to be called in before you see it versus like a fire that happens in nature. I did speak with Pano AI, and they did say that the fourth camera will help the line of sight. But that's not all we rely on, and it can't be all we rely on. This is great technology, being able to detect wildfire smoke, especially nature, especially when no one's around to see it and report it. Really, really important, but community vigilance. The community use GMRS radios to communicate with one another. Being able to report it to first responders through calls, first responder patrols. These are also other mechanisms we have to use. And anytime we talk about emergency management, redundancy has to be a part of that. So that's just something I wanted to stress. And that's pretty much my kind of updated good news. And so we're recommending to receive and file the status update on installation and performance of the Pano AI camera. And yeah, that is all I have for you.
Great. Thank you very much. Questions, staff? I guess I have one question. You know, we talked about winding down to try to not get any reports of a fire, say, in Torrance. I get it for trying to reduce the number of potential false alarms, but if there's a fire in Torrance, I know that, you know, one of the things we caught was there just at the foot by, it's not called Sunrise anymore. It's what? Yes. But I'm not sure why we wouldn't want to, you know, report to LA County Fire if there's something in the general area. We're not getting charged on a per-alert basis, are we?
No, we are not. I'll let Lizzie hop in on this, but I'll take a shot at that question as well. Most, from my understanding, most of the fires and most of the alerts we're detecting in Torrance are something along the lines of a structure or a backyard fire that would likely be reported much quicker through a 911 call. If my grill goes up in flames, I'm trying to put it out and then calling 911 immediately. That may be before the smoke gets up in the air far enough for a camera to detect anyway, which is one of the reasons. Now, with that said, geofencing, we can help kind of decipher exactly where we're geofencing and include or not.
I just want to make sure we don't geofence down too far and we're missing something in one of the close neighboring areas that could affect us.
No, agreed. I could tell you, for someone who gets those alerts, and especially when you're getting so many in a given day, and they're not on the hill. And to go on your phone and look at every single time, you almost start to get a little complacent, and that's not what we want. And I'm not the only one who receives these messages. So I think to be more effective, we should keep it on the peninsula. So when we get an alert, it really triggers a response.
Okay. Okay. Do I have a motion?
We do have, we do have one request to speak. Larry Maislich.
You don't say. Larry, how are you? Turn it on. Your mic's off. Uh-oh. They're coming out.
Right there.
There you go. You're on. Thank you very much. I'm on. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bradley, Council and staff. So we touched on a couple of points here I wanted to make. First of all, I am very excited that we are almost complete on this project that it seems like I've been working on for three and a half years or something. So to have Station Number Four go live, I think we should have like a major fiesta up there on San Pedro Hill. What was just discussed here, 98% of the alerts that come through, we call them false alerts, not false alarms. So the panel system is detecting an actual fire start, but 98% being, we don't care that much about them. It isn't just Torrance. It's Harbor City, Wilmington, Carson. Once we get San Pedro Hill up, it's going to be Long Beach, San Pedro. We get alerts coming in left and right. Malibu, we pick up the Malibu fires because 360-degree cameras. One of the things that, the problem that our city manager mentioned is there is a real issue of alert fatigue. So our city manager used the term complacent. The fire department, besides our city staff, are getting these alerts. Even our fire chief, you know, he's looking at every single alert, but you know, after you start getting multiples a day that you really aren't in your jurisdiction, you know, you kind of say, okay, maybe I'll give it another 30, 60 seconds before I check it out because you have to click on a link and look at the map and see where it is. So geofencing, we really should be pushing that with Pano. Pano has been saying this for 18 months now, that this was a workaround, that they were engineering. We geofence. So from the Torrance camera, for example, we don't care about northwest or east. We only care about south, which would get the Ivy Park area on that side of the hill. San Pedro Hill, east, east, no way. You know, we just don't want to pick that up. Just think of all the activity in the port and the refineries out there. So we really should push this geofencing, and I know Lizzie's on the call from Pano, and if the geofencing isn't going to happen soon, we should just go ahead and block things out on the camera level. Once we block out images or sections on the video image, we can't detect smoke. So that'd be good. The other issue is, as our emergency manager Luna mentioned, we did not pick up the south side Park G G spend start there. We knew this was going to happen because of the location of the Terreinea camera. We found a possible location at the base of the preserve area on PV Drive South. In retrospect, I'm glad we didn't do that because the pole we were going on that was vertical is now horizontal, and I'm almost wrapped up. Thank you. We found a location at the top of the preserve that I was very excited about, but it is on a residential property off of Island View type area in that. But it had a beautiful view of our most high-risk zone there, but Pano wasn't too excited about that because then we'd have to get an agreement with the residents. So we're stuck with Terreinea, and we do have that blind spot, but we're aware of it. So I thank the city staff for continuing to pursue this. I really just hope that we put pressure to Pano to finish off this engineering fix, so we just don't get fatigue and lose the effectiveness of the system. But I'm excited. Invite me to that ice cream party or whatever we're going to have when the switch is thrown live. So thank you so much, and have a great holiday, everyone. Thank you, Larry. You as well. Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second. Thank you.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferraro?
Yes.
Councilmember Peristam?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Seo?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Motion passes. May I have a motion to extend the meeting?
For how long?
We are on our last item.
I'll move to extend until 10:30.
Okay.
Our next item is item number three, consideration and possible action to authorize a delegation of city representatives to visit sister city Sakura City, Japan to celebrate their 20th anniversary as a municipality. Late correspondence was distributed earlier this evening.
Catherine, let's have a staff report.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember Farrar, I'll do my best to keep it snappy. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's staff is requesting that the council consider authorizing a delegation of city representatives to conduct an official sister city visit to Sakura City, Japan. First, some background on our sister city. Sakura City is located in Tochiki Prefecture, which is essentially a county, which is about 70 miles north of Tokyo, about two hours by bus. Sakura is comprised of about 44,000 residents, and it's represented by an elected mayor and 18 city assembly members.
Eighteen of us.
Aren't you glad you don't have 18 of us?
Oh, I would welcome 18 of you. Although Sakura City has a long history, it is relatively a new municipality that formed when two smaller towns consolidated in 2005. So now the city is preparing to celebrate its 20th anniversary in March. Since 2001, Sakura City has sent over 300 middle school students on a cultural exchange program with Miralast. And so that's how RPV has gotten acquainted with Sakura City. Following a visit in 2020, both cities began discussing the potential for a partnership as sister cities, and both agreed and held a virtual signing ceremony to solidify that partnership in August of 2020. Thank you. Since then, most of our anniversaries have been held virtually since the partnership was solidified in the early years of COVID-19. One city would host an event, the other would attend via Zoom and vice versa. In 2023, however, both cities were finally able to meet in person. Sakura City sent two separate delegations in August and September to help celebrate RPV's 50th anniversary, and it was a great event from what I hear. RPV led tours of the city, the greater Los Angeles area, and followed by a 50th anniversary gala. So it was a great opportunity to meet, exchange cultural, you know, processes and just to learn more about each other. In exchange, Sakura City had provided ceremonial gifts to really help, you know, share more about the culture of Japan, and those gifts are on display at City Hall right now. Staff, including Deputy City Clerk Sisson and myself, we continue to meet virtually with Sakura City staff on a monthly basis. Given their upcoming 20th anniversary, they have earnestly asked us and has asked the city council to consider sending a delegation in March to help celebrate that 20th anniversary. And so tonight, council's requested to consider sending a delegation of up to five council members, our city manager Maranian, and potentially another staff member if needed. And the dates of that visit would be March 24th through 30th next year. Staff from both cities have prepared a tentative itinerary for your consideration, so you can make an informed decision tonight. And that itinerary is listed above. I won't go through all of it in detail, but as you can see, it's pretty extensive. It's an opportunity to get to know the city, the prefecture, and the country as a whole.
Yes.
Why on earth would we fly into Haneda when this is right next to Narita Airport?
That is the recommended airport from the Sakura City officials. They say that it is one of the closest airports and probably the most convenient one in terms of the number of flights that come in and the transportation options out and in of that airport.
I guess I have to trust them because they live there, but Narita Airport is a lot closer than Haneda Airport is to Sakura City. Anyway, okay.
Right. We did bring that up with them. We said, is it Narita? And they said, no, it's Haneda. So we'll go with that for now, but we can also have that discussion if needed. As for costs, Sakura City has offered to provide chartered bus transportation and tours, as well as any meals that are provided on the tours. So tonight, city council has requested to consider covering the cost of any delegates' airfare, their lodging for five nights, any minor incidentals that may come up, and any ceremonial gifts that we provide to Sakura City so that they can also display it at their facilities as well. And we are estimating a not-to-exceed cost of about $2,500 per delegate. Obviously, those costs can go up and down depending on when we purchase airfare and whatnot. But it looks like that's a pretty conservative estimate as of now. So the recommendation tonight is to authorize a delegation to conduct an official sister city visit to Sakura City in March 24th through 25th, and to select up to five council members tonight.
Thank you, Catherine. Questions, staff?
No, I'm ready to go.
So just let me, so you know, I do I love the idea of having the sister city, but I do feel guilty that they've sent three delegations here, and the only person that's been to Sakura City happens to be me, and I was there on for another reason, and I was able to extend myself and visit Sakura City. It's a lovely city. I do think that we should take the opportunity to further cement those relationships with our sister city. If we're going to have a sister city, I think we should take advantage of that ability. And I do feel bad that they've sent three full delegations here to see us, and we have not gone to see them as a delegation.
Not only did they send a delegation to our 50th anniversary celebration, but the mayor played the drums for us. Not this mayor, the mayor of Sakura City. So are you going to play the drums when we go there?
No, I'm going to take a pie and show them how to eat a pie quickly. Unless, of course, Dan can supply me with a snow globe to take with me to, never mind. That's a whole different story. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think it is worth noting that, you know, we are, you know, just came off of a difficult budget discussion, but
We did.
but not to go would be really insulting. And if you're not going to go, you might as well not do the program.
Yes.
This is actually, 2,500 a person is quite a reasonable budget. We should do it, in my opinion.
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
I move approval.
I'll second that. Thank you.
Councilmember Ferraro?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peristam?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Seo?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our future agenda items.
Oh, if I can just step in really quickly, we will need to have a list of council members who would be selected to go on the trip.
Well, if five can go.
Yes.
Then all five of us, if we're available and can go, should go.
Right.
Yeah, that's how I interpreted the motion.
that you basically identified the ability for all five to go to as 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 noted here. So we'll we'll make sure that's reflected in the motion.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Our next item then are the future agenda items.
Um, anybody, uh, future agenda? So I think we did have the uh during the landslide to come back at the next uh council meeting with a plan for what we could potentially defer and how we could fund um a N number of additional de-watering wells and what that, where those would be, and come up with basically the plan to go execute on what Mayor Protam was uh was trying to do tonight.
Yes, absolutely. That is set for the January 21st meeting. So and then we'll come back on the February 4th meeting with uh another 60-day uh update. So we'll 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 split the two agents out.
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone else have any future?
Yes.
Uh, it's it's a question first. Uh, when do we get a presentation from the different committees? Is that done? I know it's done in an annual or semi-annual basis, an update on the committees?
Yeah, that's usually done in the summer.
It's twice a year, and the next um scheduled visit from all of our chairs of our committees and commissions is January 21st.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay. Never mind.
That's great.
It's usually January and June, right around that time.
I just remember the summer.
I I've been waiting to ask this of staff. Six years I've been.
You've been waiting to give the report?
No, for for six years, I've been coming and doing biannual reports twice a year. And I I, if if I need to make a motion, I will, but I would like to properly call these semi-annual reports and not biannual reports. Biannual means every other year. Semi-annual means twice a year.
I think you just get, you can give staff direction on that. You don't make a motion for that.
We we have debated the that biannual versus biennial and so forth, but we will change it to.
They debate that every other year.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for humoring me. All right.
Any other?
No, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh.
Oh, not, no, not about that.
Okay.
But.
Move on to oral reports? Or did you want something on the agenda?
No. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Wait, that's two more items from now. Santa hasn't come yet.
I'm I'm trying to move you all along.
I I got six minutes.
Five.
We're extended till 10:30.
Five.
Hey.
Speak if you're going to.
Madam City Clerk, next item?
The city council oral.
Okay, let's do that oral reports. Councilman Peristam.
I have nothing to report except swearing in last week, which uh was was just a great, great opportunity and and and.
That's the first time I've ever seen you swear, too.
Yeah. It's it's probably only my first meeting. But it was an honor. It was an honor and a pleasure to uh to be sworn in to represent our city. And uh, it's it's something I I truly look forward to over the next four years, so thank you very much.
Great. Councilwoman Lewis?
My comment is to echo uh Councilwoman Ferraro's sentiments of Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Winter Solstice, whatever your holiday is, enjoy it, have a Happy New Year. Best wishes to all.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
I'll get to say it again. Merry Christmas and also the all those happies that you just listed. And I know we won't be back for a month, but I want to wish everyone a very safe and happy holiday because um we want to come back with the renewed vim and vigor in the new year and um so Happy New Year as well. That's it. Go. You got.
Happy holidays, everyone. I love you. Stay safe, stay warm.
Um, and let's see, I had the honor of uh going with then-Mayor Crookshank. Um, we took a film crew on a tour of the landslide. Uh, they're doing a feature documentary on the landslide. So Mayor Crookshank, I, uh, City Manager Maranian, um, our Director of uh Public Works, that's what you are. Uh, we were able to go out with Mike Phelps to um to visit some of that, and they got some really great um uh footage of some of the landslide mitigation that we're doing, some of the winterization, as well as some of the major items, uh, some of the areas that has slid. So hopefully that will uh increase awareness. Um, hopefully that will increase the likelihood of getting additional funding. Um, but that was an interesting uh tour that we took with some folks that were completely from outside of the uh, from the area. Uh, with that, I would say um, happy holidays to everyone. I know staff is going to get some well-deserved rest, so thank you guys very much for everything you do for the city and making us look good up here, as hard as that is sometimes, especially to make me look good.
Speak for yourself.
Very much. Excuse me, Councilwoman Ferraro?
I didn't say anything.
Uh, with that, um, with two minutes to spare, um, I will uh adjourn this to
January.
January 21st. Thank you very much. Good night.